Are we ready? All right, I'm calling to order the, sorry, not October anymore, November, November eighteen, twenty twenty-five, meeting of the South Borough Select Board, and the first item on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public who wish to offer a comment to do so, and a comment should be reserved for matters that aren't on the posted agenda. We try to keep comments to three minutes or less. It's not intended as a back and forth, just an opportunity for a comment. So is there anyone here in the audience, or the online audience, has a public comment? Yes?
Sure, yeah, yeah. Well, first thing, thank you all for serving on the board. Second, my name's Ken Boy, Ken Ashley Road. I have some comments about the Article ten that was at the recent town meeting. It didn't really get discussed much because it was indefinitely postponed, but I thought I'd share my thoughts on the the subject since it's still percolating around for consideration. So so my viewpoint on the article was, I posed it for for two separate reasons, both of which kind of come back to the scope and kind of lack of defined and defined and crisp goals. So the proposal was put out, covered both the executive and legislative functions of town town government, and I felt that since it was a, or the selectman proposal, that the subject matter of that committee should be more confined to the executive functions of the the government. The, you know, if there is appetite for looking at reforms to the legislative side of of things, I think a proposal would be more appropriate from the moderator or out of town meeting itself to handle that side of the house. And I just know while we're we're talking about legislature, I really am a strong proponent of open town meeting and would be opposed to any, you know, deviation away from from that. So often in politics, you're forced to pick someone who's going to agree with you on a good day eighty percent of the time and do some other stuff twenty percent of the time. At town meeting, there's always a guy there that thinks and votes exactly the way I do. That's because I'm there, right? And everybody at town meeting shares that prerogative. So then the the second way that the proposal seemed to to be unwieldy is that even within an executive reform exercise, there was no clear end goal that you were driving toward. For instance, I could get on board with something that, okay, have a committee that generates a menu of ideas that would decrease head count by X percent, reduce salary and benefits spend by Y percent and reduce the space needs by by Z percent or something. And there could be some, you know, other criteria that you add on to having a committee investigate, or you could decide to do that yourself. I don't think it necessarily needs to be a committee. So so those are my thoughts on the the subject, and I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Is there any other public comment in the audience here or online? Anyone have their hand raised?
Okay, yep. So I was contacted by Michael Newt, who wanted to be here tonight, but was unable, and I suggested if he wrote a brief comment, I would be happy to read it into the record. Or I mean, I've sent a copy of this off off to Mark and Vanessa, so it can go in the minutes, which I think is required. This is comments by Mr. Michael Newt of forty-nine Wildwood Drive, who is also a member of the Capital Improvement and Planning Committee. There are his words, not mine. Hello, I'd like to make three quick points about the discussion of the school options from the last select board meeting, which I was not able to attend. First, there is at least one and maybe multiple suggestions that the new fourth grade option not be presented at town meeting because it was voted down recently. The context for that vote is crucial to remember. The set of alternatives and their associated costs were not presented to the voters, and at the time there was a publicized Plan B option that was presented as virtually cost-free and never effectively pushed back on, but which we now know would cost almost as much as a new school. That was also a strange moment economically with new tariffs about to hit, but since the committee this summer has taken the time to put a price on these options, I'd argue that all four be included in some way for the voters now that the information that the information available is more complete. Secondly, one person at the meeting mentioned the public comment about the site conditions to Neri related to the landfill. There is concern, certainly, although it is mostly because people keep making stuff up about the conditions that that goes unchallenged. This nonsense needs to be pushed back on somehow. I have read the twenty twenty-four monitoring reports in detail, and there's nothing in any of them that suggests the dangerous condition there, the exclamation points. It's cap, the cap is well maintained, and the samples tested were all within guidance, but you wouldn't know it unless you read every page of those long reports. I am pointing that I I'm pointing that our public out publicly because I have not heard it said anywhere else. I I think that it would go a long way towards alleviating the concerns. Finally, per the CIPC meeting on ten twenty, there is still some uncertainty about whether the Neri roof replacement is going to trigger full ADA compliant renovation at the same time. To my knowledge, this is not known, and it is important and an important cost driver in the near terms, obviously. So that reinforces Jason's point about the urgency of settling this. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And that's something we are going to talk about more on the regular agenda under continued discussion of next steps for Neri School. Is there any other public comment? Okay, so the next item on the agenda, this one is kind of strange. It's a poll hearing that's not really going to go forward, but we still have to go through the exercise of opening the hearing or something. So, Mark, I'll let you speak to this.
So I, um, thank you. So the the hearing request has been withdrawn by National Grid, so there'll be no hearing tonight, no opening of the hearing. The short story is that the plans that were being reviewed when this application was put in were several years old and did not note that all of the utilities in that area were underground, therefore, no need for poll. So Grid has withdrawn, Grid is paying for the application fees for the advertising and the notification as they normally would have, and we will move on. So, and Bill Pootrey brought this to our attention because if you may remember from two years ago or two and a half years ago, he was before us and worked on an easement that has to do with the utilities there in this area of Meadow Lane where there's new homes being built. So he was very surprised when, after spending all this money to develop all these new homes that have completely underground utilities, he received something missing. And he he's planning on having his new house be in one of these. We're planning on putting a new electric
Thirty-five foot pole.
Thirty-five foot pole right in front of your front yard. So it turned out it was all a misunderstanding. Well, I guess we don't need to take any vote or anything.
You do not. We're not even going to open the hearing. All right, so we have two committee interviews, appointments for this evening. Eric Eng for the Tricentennial Committee. Sir, why don't you come up and introduce yourself?
So my name is Eric Eng. I've been a South Borough resident for thirty-three years. Married, have three children, thirty, twenty-nine, hard to remember sometimes, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-two. It changes every year. That's the problem, you know. But anyway, and I'm interested in participating in the Tricentennial Committee. And the reason for that is I want to be able to give something back to the town of South Borough. I'm largely retired, and I need constructive things to do with my time and investing in this way seems like something that I would enjoy doing in a good way for me to spend some of my time. In terms of background, I have had a long career as an entrepreneur. So I'm good at starting organizations and growing them and doing things with them, and founded, built, and sold four different companies along the way. And I'd like to bring the expertise I have to help out the Tricentennial Committee.
Well, thanks. Thanks for stepping forward, and I see that you already met with the Tricentennial Committee and
Right.
they're on board with having you there. I'm also a member of that committee, so we welcome it. Fully support your coming on board. Thanks for volunteering. Al, do you have any questions?
Only that we both worked at Phoenix Technologies many, many years ago.
Oh, my gosh, when was that? Huh, what what group were you in?
I was in the printer group.
Got it, yep. Yeah. Bill Hilliard, is that the right name?
I worked for Bill Hughes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, right. A long time ago.
So much for old time.
Yeah.
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
So Eric, welcome. Thank you for volunteering for this. So Andrew's on the committee. I'm on the sister entity that raises the money for this.
Yes, the fundraiser.
Yep. So all these transcripts. So I'm very interested in this too, but it looks like you've got a great background for this. Patty Fiori is on your committee too, and she's also really good at the digital stuffs with so I think that you and she will have a good time doing this. So I think that your background is going to be very helpful. So thank you for stepping up.
Yeah, my pleasure.
I don't have any questions, but thank you for volunteering.
Yeah.
I move that we appoint Eric Eng to the Tricentennial Committee for a term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
So now you've got to get sworn in.
Yeah, so you should receive an appointment letter from the Select Board Office, and then in order to make sure you understand the solemn nature of your responsibilities have to go and be formally sworn in by the town clerk.
There you go. We'll see if I can get through that process successfully.
That's the test.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Joyner is here, and he has happily stepped forward to volunteer be one of the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust, right? Why don't you come forward and I know you and familiar with you, some of your work on the some other committees, including the youth. I'll let you speak to it.
Yes, okay.
Well, if you want to, you can keep going. You were doing pretty well.
Okay, all right.
Good evening, everyone. I'm David Joyner. I'm a South Borough resident for over thirty-four years. I was formerly a member of the Community Preservation Committee, as well as Youth and Family Services, along with Marguerite, through two thousand twenty-three, so I was there for about three years. The reason that I left the the those appointments was because I pursued a career in music. I was encouraged by someone whom I worked with to audition for a choir that sings with the Boston Pops. Made that, I got in into that choir. Then I got into another choir that sings annually at the Museum of Fine Arts, the Millennium Gospel Choir. And then I got into two other choirs that travel. So since I left the the committee, I've both of those appointments, I've traveled to Peru, to Portugal with these choirs. I'm next year, I may travel to Ghana or Austria. So so it was pursue music. So that that's where my time went. But I also have a passion for affordable housing. I've been involved in affordable housing for over thirty-eight years through property management, asset management, advocacy. I currently work for Bank of America as a tax credit investor in affordable housing. I am an asset manager, an asset manager portfolio of ninety assets throughout the country, and I'm acutely aware of the great need for affordable housing, not only in our state, but throughout our country. So when Paul approached me about a month, well, maybe a month and a half ago, about the opening on the Affordable Housing Trust, I had a decision to make, given the the time that I spend singing. But I'm also committed to the need and and addressing the need, and I understand that what we would do in this this trust is there's a small dent in the the dramatic need for affordable housing, but anything that we do is important. So I, when he approached me, I thought about it. I talked to my wife about it. My wife was also on the school committee with Paul, and we said, well, this is something that you can add value to, because you have experience in it, and again, it's it's in a small way to to address that growing need.
Do you have experience with the whole tax credit?
Yes.
Part of this?
Yes. So in the the my current role at at the bank, we invest in tax credit. So we we buy tax credits from developers to develop affordable housing. So my role is to ensure that the bank gets its benefits from those tax credits. So I mean, so we're involved, or I'm personally involved in the, not in the origination stage, but everything from origination to stabilization to from construction lease up to stabilization to disposition. So I'm intimately familiar with the the program and how it works. I've done advocacy at the state level, at the federal level, used to travel to DC a couple of times a year, met with state representatives as well to to advocate for affordable housing. So it's a it's something that I'm passionate about, and I had to kind of weigh the the time that I spend between the committee, and Paul was very specific. He said about one point seven meetings a month. So I was like, okay, all right, I think I could squeeze that in. So, yeah, so that's 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 basically why I I I decided to to do that.
So I'll hand it over to other people, but just a couple of things I wanted to share with you that I think are great things that the, you know, the trust should keep looking into are grants for affordable housing, and then you know, I just had a thought and then just completely lost it. What was I going to say? Maybe I'll just
Too young for that, Andrew.
It's going to come back to me.
Okay.
We believe you.
But we'll keep the grants in mind. Okay, for sure.
Grants, go ahead, yeah.
So David, I'm so glad to meet you. I've heard so much about you. Sam Stivers, Sam, are you over there? I think I can't see you. Sam has always talked about you because, you know, the the previous version of the Affordable House Trust was all a select board for the most part. And, you know, this is not our area, right? So we're so glad to have this reform and have people on it that really know it. I didn't know Jesse had resigned, but let me just ask you, do you know Michael Alpert? Have you heard of Michael Alpert?
No.
So he he's in this business big time too, as far as the tax credit stuff. And who is your wife's last name Joyner too?
Susan Dargan is her name. So she was on the the school committee many, many years ago, many years ago.
So I just wonder if you're, but no, this is very exciting as far as what your background is. So you're still working full time for BOA?
Yes.
Okay, but what a great life you have as far as the singing stuff.
Oh, it was, I wasn't, it was, it just came upon me where someone said, you know, I we one of the developments that we went to was a senior center. We were senior apartment complex. We were singing Christmas carols, and my colleague who was in this choir, he said, you have a good voice. You should consider auditioning for this. I never sung in a choir before, never sung, didn't, not exposed to gospel music, none of that. It was all new to me. And then within my first year, my first concert, it was a multi-faith concert at Beacon Hill, and then the second concert, I was on stage at Symphony Hall with a gospel award, Grammy Award-winning artist. And then it just kind of took off from there.
So this is great. So good for you on that. I can tell you've got a good voice for what you talk, but no, with what you know about how to deal with tax credits, you know, with Doug Mans on there, with with Paul, with Al, and who am I missing? Al, who's the fifth? I got Doug.
Ellen Maria.
I said Doug. Oh, Ellen, Ellen, Ellen. You've got a really good
Yeah.
variety of of expertise that should, and you're right, we're not going to save the world here, but every little bit we can do is, you know, one family at a time.
Exactly.
Trying to to help.
Exactly.
I am thrilled to death that you have applied for this, so good.
Thank you.
I I love your background. I think it's great and diverse, so I'm happy you applied and look forward to it.
Thank you.
I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Marguerite, do you have any? And I remembered my thought.
Okay, excellent.
Sure, so one of the dilemmas that this group has had, and we have not really solved it, is should the Affordable Housing Trust focus on acquiring a specific property to then make it into an affordable unit? And or to take some other path, rental assistance, etc. There's a variety of different things that the trust can do. And one of the the challenges we find with focusing on specific properties is that often there's some neighborhood opposition, some this, and, you know, the as much as we've tried to streamline this so that the the new trust is independent of the select board and could act fast to acquire something, it's never going to be able to act as fast as a private sector entity, right? So then
And the private sector has its own challenges, and similar to what you described as well with sometimes there's opposition as well.
Would be, Alan, what do you think about this? Maybe in the next month or two, if the the trust, there's a date that would work for the trust to come in and just, we bring them in and just have a you know, hear what the trust is doing and how we can support them.
And, you know, too, we only have a million dollars in the trust that is designated for this, and so, you know, to add on to what Andrew said, do you, it's hard to, you know, buy, you you don't want to use it all in one thing, right? You want to leverage it and, you know, add the five percent to the capital structure, whatever. So, but hopefully you guys will continue. I mean, Al has been working hard on this ever since he was elected to select board. That's why he wanted to run for this because of his passion for affordable housing. So with you guys, I'm optimistic we're going to come up with something that is at least, you know, will help this town.
Well, it ties to what else you were talking about was leveraging other sources of funds as well to try to maximize what what you have in terms of the that million dollars, and how do you, how can you spread that in a way that can have the most impact, for sure? And it's good to see you again, Marguerite.
Yes, it's been a while.
It's been a while.
The library parking lot.
That's right.
I just wondered if you had any thoughts about the ADU legislation, and if any of that would be useful.
I am not personally familiar with that legislation. I would have to get up to speed on it, so it it has not come to my purview and what in my in my current role, but I would get up to speed on that.
Well, it's just the new legislation about accessory dwelling units.
Accessory dwelling units? Okay, so is it a a sort of an accessibility?
It's 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 that a landowner, well, we should probably talk off camera.
Yeah.
You can build nine hundred square feet or below by right now. You don't have to go through a lot of bureaucracy locally to get it done. So you've really got, they're trying to, you know, again, let people figure out a way to utilize what they have. Sometimes they need to, you know, put parents, whatever. So it's to build more. It's small, but another way to to add some housing into the town.
That makes sense in the in the context of you know, the the housing stock being limited, and how can you supplement that with in ways that are nimble, as you kind of talked about. So, yeah, sure, well. I I'll I would review it and then have more thought on it, and then I would talk to the the rest of the the trust about it as well.
Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, I move that we appoint David Joyner to the Board of Trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust for a term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The process you've done.
I heard.
I'll come back.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So do you have any other concerts coming up soon?
I do, or, well, in in South Borough, there is one, uh, next Monday, it's a multi-faith service at Pilgrim Church. And I've been asked to sing the opening song and the the closing song.
This coming Monday?
Yep, seven thirty, I think, at Pilgrim Church. And then four concerts and four concerts at the MFA with the Millennium Gospel Choir. It's the twenty twenty-fifth anniversary.
Okay.
So, yeah, for sure.
That's great.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Boris Low Insurance. Sorry, I haven't had the chance to meet you yet, but that's the point of this meeting, right? Oh, sorry, I'll let Okay, Ryan is going to make the introduction.
No, you guys are good. This is Deb Young and Susan Boyesford, through the principals at Boris Low, that we've chosen as our new health consultant. We're very excited to have them here tonight to just quickly talk about who they are and and give us some preview of what they'll be doing for us, and obviously, some Q and A. They've been around quite a while, I think over forty years, forty-five years. And yes, they do municipal business. They work with towns, school districts. I think they mentioned they have a school district being tomorrow. So, and they work with Massachusetts clients, as well as with some clients outside the state, so a nice portfolio, and we think they have a nice team of seventy, eighty other people, I believe that was, Marlon. So, yeah, so we think this will be a great opportunity. As you're aware, the previous consultant we had for, we we don't even know how long. We've never determined that. It was probably thirty years, maybe longer. And it ran its course, but we're very excited to have them here. So without further ado, you guys want to take it over?
Thank you for having us tonight. My name's Susan Boivier.
Deb Young.
Both of Boris Low Insurance, and Brian, thank you for that great introduction. We were invited here tonight just to really introduce ourselves to the board and just talk about a little bit of what we do. So I know the presentation has been given to you ahead of time, and so Deb and myself are really the the primary faces that of Boris Low Insurance that will assist town of South Borough, North Borough, and the school district is also lumped in on the medical side of that as well. We do have a larger team behind us. Two of our teammates were out at a meeting today with all three of the entities. And all four in total will be the primary day-to-day folks. But again, behind us, we have a, what I refer to as an army of folks that assist with risk management, that assist with, you know, marketing, communication, health and well-being, wellness programs that we can bring forward. Big one would be compliance as well. So our team members are up there on the screen, or I should say, some of our team members, they're the leads of the the various practices that are that will help us assist the town of South Borough. So this is very, again, very similar. This, we've called us our Wheel of Fortune because it is the all the services that we bring forward that hopefully the town will embrace and help you know, some of the health and well-being and so forth, and help control healthcare spend. So we just quickly want to do a a quick recap. This is the current plan that is offered to the town of South Borough today. There's three plan offerings that the employees get to choose from. It's a with-habited pilgrim. And, excuse me, they have one, the limited network, HMO, they have a full network HMO, and then a PPO, which the PPO gives them out-of-service area, out-of-area coverage. The next slide shows the breakdown of enrollment. So this is where the the folks are enrolled in. You'll see you have twenty-one folks enrolled in that focus network, the limited network. The majority of your population is enrolled in the full network HMO. Then you do have five individuals that are on that PPO. There is a slight modification to this slide. The town does pay seventy-five percent on the HMO, but it does pay fifty percent on the PPO of the contribution. All right, so because of the timing with today, tonight's meeting, one of the the services that we bring forward is a forecast for the upcoming renewal. Traditionally, this will be in the September timeframe, beginning of October, but we're newly appointed your broker, so we did meet today with the folks, and we are, we projected a, we supplied them with a projection for your July of twenty twenty-six renewal for your active and your non-Medicare retirees. This right now is a snapshot in time. It's a twenty-four-month rolling claims experience. There will be roughly about six months new claims experience once the renewal is released. So depending on if that six months is more favorable or more costly. So depending on if that six months is more favorable or um more costly would also impact the forecast that we're bringing forward today. But right now you'll see the gross loss ratio, every dollar that Harvard Pilgrim is receiving. Uh, they are spending a dollar eight on claims. So you're you're running hot right now. Current premium nineteen million, um current claims twenty million.
The slide that you had before, as far as the seventy-five, twenty-five or the fifty-fifty, depending on the plan, you say town. Does that include the schools also?
No.
Okay, so literally does the town side?
Correct, Southborough employees, right.
Okay, um because the schools are they've got their union contract. So that contract doesn't say the same thing? As far as what the employees pay versus employers? Okay, alright.
Yeah, so each entity has has determined the the correct premium split.
Because we're about to do a new school contract. That's why I'm asking, um because I would think that could be on the table as far as discussing it.
Next slide. So this is just a quick snapshot in time. Again, this was the time period that we were um doing our projection. It was August of twenty-three through July of twenty-five. Um, so this is month by month, your claim spend. Um, blue is pharmacy, green is medical, and that orange line that runs above is where your premium lies. So you can very easily see if, you know, if you had some very favorable months or some unfavorable months. Right, this slide here is what um large claimants. So um right now your pooling level is at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So if you think about that as a like a stop loss. Right now, on the current period, your, you know, top ten claimants have a total spend of three million, seven forty-five. In the prior period, that um top ten claimant spend was three million, zero, nine, zero. So uh you will see, though, that your your uh number one claimant in the current period is now termed. So there'll be no further spend with that claimant. This, so this is just some of the um the considerations that our risk management team put together in regards to projecting forward for the July twenty-six uh renewal. Because again, we know that you're building out your budgets now. So this is really when you need that placeholder. So some of the assumptions that we made, you know, medical trend at a nine point two percent. Um, you know, and then um, you know, some projections of negotiation power with the carriers. You are seeing that we are per the math works out to roughly a sixteen percent increase. And we're we're um, you know, we're we're hopeful to land around that twelve percent with negotiation power. You'll see down below, um, you know, what what brings plays into this, you know, in twenty twenty-four. The uh renewal included a eight point six um underwriting discretion. Um, in twenty twenty-five, your released renewal was twenty-four point nine. You ended at a seventeen point nine. So more times than not, we are successful with um getting some uh more favorable renewal from the released renewal. One of the um, the you know, the um driving factors here is the the GLP-one drugs. Everybody's heard about the GLP-ones. Everybody's talking about the GLP-ones. All of the carriers are moving um towards not covering them. So with Harvard Pilgrim, July, uh excuse me, renewal starting January one, twenty twenty-six. GLP-one drugs will no longer be covered for weight loss. They will continue to be covered for diabetes. So just to give you an example, we we ran some um some utilization on the GLP-ones. So from January of twenty-five through um the end of October of twenty-five, you had a spend of one point three million for GLP-one drugs for weight loss.
Say that one more time.
January for January one of twenty-five through October one, October thirty-one of twenty-five, you had a spend of one point three million for GLP-one drugs for weight loss. So now keep in mind, it is no longer going to be covered with Harvard Pilgrim. So um you know, it's no longer covered. That Harvard is indicating that that will, you know, have an impact of roughly about two to four percent reduction on your um renewal. When we were um looking at that, we anticipated roughly about a two and a half percent. The um, the district, the towns do have the opportunity to add a rider on to it to continue to cover it. That will be about that will be roughly between eight to ten percent on your already released renewal. So as an example, if you had a renewal of a twelve percent, you would add an additional eight percent on that if you were to continue to cover the GLP-ones.
So your twelve percent um trying to get down to reflects this change?
Correct. Your renewal, because they're no longer covering it, your renewal is released without it being covered. I think that's it. I don't think there's any more slides. Oh, just quickly, uh your ancillary renewals, you had a favorable renewal last year, eleven point seven percent decrease. Next renewal is July of twenty-six. We'll work on that. And then um your vision, you are in a rate guarantee that is not a free renewal until August of twenty-seven. So there'll be no rate impact there. Both of these are, I should say, the IMED is a voluntary program, so the employees pay the full cost of that. And then.
So we just go back to the schools again and make sure we understand this, Brian. I'm I'm looking at him too. Okay, so the schools have the same plans everybody else does. Is that right? Okay, so the differences between whatever the um contract says, the union contract says, and the town is on what the employees contribute. Is that the only difference or is there other differences?
Yeah, so the plan designs are are identical as well as the rates. But then the the district versus the town is the premium difference. And then just some things to um think about for the upcoming renewal in July of twenty-six. Um, we met with the uh all the uh players today. We talked about receiving the renewal in the February time time period. Um, just to have enough time to um educate. And then um we were here last week, week before, with the HIIC meeting for the town of Southborough. Um, they were asking about a three-tier rate structure. They were um conversation about surrounding a health savings account plan. Um, as well as offering some voluntary benefits. Voluntary benefits again will be um employee hundred percent covered.
And the advantage that is you've got group rates and so you'd pay less than you'd pay if you went out and did it yourself?
Correct. As an example, the pet insurance, um if you offered it here, they pay the full rate, but they get a ten percent discount. Any questions?
I don't have any at the moment. As I'm thinking, maybe other people's questions will generate some comments. But Al, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at the moment, other than, you know, a little sticker shock.
Mm-hmm, for sure. You and and most every other company municipality out there for twenty twenty-six and and twenty twenty-seven, they are saying are going to be tough years.
I had a GLP-one question. Um, is there an alternative weight loss drug that is not those that is available? Why am I thinking there was another medication that was available for weight loss that wasn't them that had recently been released?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, those are the two. And again, with um Wegovy and Zepbound are the two. And Harvard has already um no longer covering Wegovy. They are str- strictly only covering Zepbound, but that is also going away as of your renewal in twenty-six.
Are the other major carriers like Blue Cross, Blue?
All of them are doing it. There are.
And is the trend to just have you offer a little add-on where you could add, you could have coverage for that for some additional premium or just not at all?
The add-on would be the eight to ten percent with Harvard. So it's not a little add-on, it's a big add-on.
That's that's townwide.
So the premium for the if.
For everybody.
It goes up eight to ten percent.
Correct.
If you put the rider on.
If you if you were to, you know.
Okay, that's easy.
Right, so again, your renewal, because the the insurance carrier is no longer covering it, your renewal is released without coverage.
Okay.
If you thought you were going to cover it, think about an additional eight to ten percent on those individual premiums that are released.
Have you seen towns where or any organizations where that has happened already? I'm just one, I mean, that's a lot of.
That they are covering it or?
They're not covering it.
Uh, all of our clients are not covering. That that we don't have a single client that has opted right now to cover it.
That's gonna be a an adjustment.
It is. And and uh Harvard Pilgrim will be messaging out to the utilizes of of the drug. So they will be messaging out that it is no longer um being covered as if you were.
How do you think our um based on the other municipal clients you have, how do you think our, you know, cost sharing of the seventy-five, twenty-five compares to other clients that you have?
You're in line. Um, you know, we do have some that are maybe a little bit slightly higher. Um, but.
Higher in that there is more of a cost to the town or less of a cost?
More of a cost to the town.
So higher than seventy-five?
That's correct. The town, the town would be taking on more.
Any lower?
Yes, yes.
How low have you seen anybody go?
Uh, sixty-two, sixty-two, thirty-eight.
That's the lowest you've seen?
Mm-hmm.
Because let's just make a budget point right now, right? So the total premium that they're predicting for um now, this is actually the year we're in right now. It's eight point three, eight point four million dollars.
So that's a snapshot in time with that enrollment.
So twelve percent of that's over a million dollars. So for those that um and I'm this is not correct. So those that think we're going to have a zero or one or two percent budget increase, this is the kind of thing that really blows it. It's not necessarily a headcount. It's this um that we can't control. Um, and this is a million dollars right off the bat to start with.
With all due respect, it actually is headcount that drives this. And um, you know, this makes our labor increasingly expensive and it means that um we have to be even more cautious about adding in or uh replacing o- open positions. So.
So I take, so I agree with you. I take back, um, obviously, this is a part of the overall cost of headcount. Um, but I mean, this is right now, we're starting off one point two um million dollars as far as an increase for fiscal year twenty-seven for this, if there, if you can get it down to the twelve.
And again.
You're not even down to the twelve yet. This is.
And keep in mind, we also have six additional months of claims data. So depending on how that claims data behaves, if it's more favorable, then, you know, our starting point will be will be less. But if it's less favorable, it it could be more.
Um, one question I guess I have is um you're you're showing us Harvard Pilgrim. Are there other vendors out there that we should be considering?
So we 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 can go to market with the other carriers. Um, keep in mind, when we go to market, we uh they do require your claims experience, so they know how you're running. They do require your renewal, so they know what the other carrier um is releasing as a renewal. Depends, I would say, depends on what type of year they're looking at. Are they trying to grow their membership or are they trying to um be fiscally sound? You know, depends on how they would release that quote. So um if they were trying to grow their membership, as an example, they may come in with a rate that is less expensive than Harvard. And then the following year, they are going to be experience rating you. So you're you can you can never run away from your own experience, no matter what carrier you're with. So the following year, you're going to, you're you're going to be experience rated. So depending on how your experience runs. Now, you can, your your experience can turn around and and be more favorable and you will get a more favorable renewal, no matter who you're with.
It does seem to me we we need to um exhaust all our options here.
Yeah.
How many viable competitors to, I mean, Tufts is now part of Harvard, right? So they're they're gone.
Right.
Um, how many viable competitors to Harvard Pilgrim are there now?
I would say one other, Blue Cross.
And I wouldn't say Blue Cross is necessarily trying to grow their membership. I mean.
They're all of the carriers are losing money, so they're 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 not trying to grow their membership right now. They're trying to right the ship.
So unless we can find a way to um, you know, help people be healthier, um, this is really a problem. Brian, what do the schools contribute right now? What's their, what's the employees' share of the cost, K through eight?
Can't write it. It may be seventy, thirty. I couldn't recall.
Better than ours?
What there's, it might be.
I thought they were seventy-five, twenty-five.
Northborough had a wacky one. I know that. They were all, they they had a real sliding scale type one, but I can't recall if the district is across the board the same or not.
We we have it from today.
Yeah, you okay.
We have it from today.
Has it right at her fingertips?
Talking about the school district that we're at today. So this seventy-five, twenty-five.
What is it?
Seventy-five.
So they had the same issue, so that the school district.
They used to be eighty, twenty, Brian, and then the last contract, they did come down to seventy-five, twenty-five. They got something back for it, but they did reduce it to seventy-five, twenty-five.
And is that information, do you need to know the cost, premium cost sharing before you, okay? So you, as the consultant, you're just going to help broker the best overall premium and then at the town, after that information comes forward, the town can decide what's the best?
If there's a premium modification.
Okay.
Correct.
So when is the experience cutoff as far as what's going to be effective seven, one, twenty-six?
So probably um be claims dated through January. Um, or December depends, because again, um we're trying to move the needle up a little bit, knowing that it's going to be a a difficult year. So we're um, we're going to have, we had a meeting today with all the the entities. We're going to have um a meeting with Harvard just to see. So it will either be claims experienced through December or January, depending on what their cutoff time is in order for their underwriter to release the renewal in the February.
So you've looked at it through what date?
I mean.
You've gone through what date right now as far as what you've looked at?
It was through August.
Okay, so you'd pick up the next four months, maybe five months?
Mm-hmm.
So I am going to have more questions later, but I think we've, I I can't go any further tonight because we just don't know what it's going to turn out. And we haven't really gotten into the budget yet either to see how it all puts together. So um, this has been really, really helpful. Um, I think as far as trying to understand, you know, why this costs so much and how big it is, how important it is um to to our budget. So um I think this is a good start to truly uh working with you guys and thank you for putting this together.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Appreciate your time.
The next item on the agenda is update from the wastewater study committee.
Delighted to see this such a popular topic, large crowd. Always draws a big one. Uh, Sam Stivers, Chair of the Wastewater Study Committee.
And Brian Shea, the Vice Chair.
So um we appreciate the opportunity to update the select board. Um, I'll comment that I've seen a lot of these presentations, and I'm going to do this from the recipient's view of the of the process, which is assume everybody's read the material in the packet. I'm not going to reread this stuff and um get to the point, basically. So the 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 outline of the story here is first, you know, why are we doing this at all, which is important to understand? Second, what is the committee supposed to be doing, which is our charge? What have we learned so far, which are several interesting things, we think? And where do we go from here, both near term and longer term? And finally, uh, what do we want from the select board? We've got an ask here for the select board. So um, that's the sequence. I'll start with a a quick comment about the larger context of why we're doing this. As all of us are aware, town residents are concerned about steadily increasing property tax bills. Other residents and at least one select board member have expressed the concern about the town's fiscal model with rising costs and taxes being unsustainable. Other residents and at least one select board member have expressed the concern about the town's fiscal model with rising costs and taxes being unsustainable, and there's certainly some truth to this. These financial pressures are due in to a variety of factors such as resident desires for high-quality public services and infrastructure such as schools, public safety, uh, senior services, roads, sidewalks, et cetera, in a world that requires increasing costs to provide these things from not only inflation pressures, but also from added regulatory pressures such as new building codes and ADA requirements and so on and so forth. So the, our committee believes that the best and, and possibly the only long-term solution to this is to find additional tax revenue from what we see as a key underdeveloped asset in the town, which is commercial development along Route Nine. This can produce significant new tax revenue from entities and individuals outside of Southborough, thereby relieving the property tax pressure on our residents. The key to new Route Nine commercial development is wastewater service, and making this feasible is the objective of the West, the Wastewater Study Committee. The good news is, we believe there's a path to get this done, the not-so-good news is, this will take some time and there's some significant challenges to it. But in the long term, we think that Route Nine commercial development, thoughtfully done, can provide the financial support for continued growth and development of high-quality town infrastructure and services, all in a way that works for the residents. So now for the specific update, the material in your packet, uh, I'm gonna start with the bottom line, which is the charge. Simple, develop a plan for providing wastewater treatment services primarily development around, along Route Nine. Second, assess the feasibility of such a system, and if it's feasible, create a high-level comprehensive plan to do it. And finally, make periodic reports, at least quarterly, to the select board. So, cut to the chase, what we've learned, we believe that we need a capacity of about three hundred thousand gallons per day of wastewater treatment capacity, ideally closer to five hundred thousand for development along Route Nine, we've looked at the parcels along there, uh, we've got some expertise on the committee and elsewhere that talks about potential need for wastewater services along Route Nine. These numbers, we think, are pretty solid, to put it in context, uh, Westborough, which has a treatment plant for Westborough, and they, they do Shrewsbury and a little bit of Hopkinton as well, they're about seven million gallons a day, so we're a much smaller operation here for Route Nine, which is, makes it possible to do quicker, we think. But, um, uh, it's a pretty reasonable system, we think, and we've discovered that it's technically feasible to build a system for Route Nine. Potential, potential plant sites, wastewater plant is one component that takes maybe five acres or so of property. And then you need a ground discharge area, two ways you discharge, one is into water bodies, typically rivers now. Unfortunately, EPA and DEP has stopped issuing permits basically for surface water discharge, it may be out there, but it's almost impossible to get. So you wind up with groundwater discharge, which is sort of like a septic, uh, field, beach field, septic system, beach field, but more sophisticated. And we believe potential sites do exist for this, and depending on soil conditions, we need at least ten or fifteen acres for this on perfect conditions, maybe twice or more of that, uh, in, in tough conditions, so it doesn't require a huge amount of property, but it's a fair amount of property, but those sites, we believe, do exist. Financing for construction and initial, initial operation is a limiting factor, the longer term, you can get financing for a system that's operating, but initially, it's hard to, to pay for it, and so you need some sort of a, a kickstart there, we looked at Littleton, for example, uh, who built a system that's very similar to the one we're talking about, they actually had about a fifty-acre site, I think it was, it was an IBM facility that, uh, got sold to a local developer, who's gonna put a bunch of commercial activities there, and that developer has agreed to pay for about sixty percent of that system. So that got, got them over the hurdle in terms of being able to get the thing built and operating and pull in other parts of town, so sadly, we don't have that perfectly, although we've got some interest, given the new Costco, uh, potential project at the western end of, of Route Nine in town, that could provide at least a beginning step for that kind of process, so we're excited about that one. So again, um, that is sort of where we're headed here and what we found. What we're gonna ask from the select board is help with site acquisition, as we get into this, uh, we're gonna obviously need, uh, to agree, get agreements for use of sites for both the wastewater plant and the, the discharge, the ground discharge area. Help with, as needed, with finding additional system users and volume, this is a volume business, so the, the bigger plant you build, the more economical it is to run. And frankly, Westborough and Marlborough are both growing in terms of commercial activity, they claim currently they don't need extra capacity, but you never know, and so keeping those communication lines open and, uh, at least being aware of potential opportunities to have them help support some of the costs by adding volume to the system is, is something that's worth keeping an eye on. And finally, communication with other communities, we have al- already reached out to a number of communities who have built these systems for ideas about what you do, what you don't do, et cetera, et cetera, and so we wanna keep those lines of communication open as well, so help with that, uh, as, as it goes along would be useful. And then support for design funding, primarily for site evaluation at this point. And that's the first step that comes in the process, and we are looking for some help, we believe, at this point, from the twenty-twenty-six annual town meeting for that. Uh, more to come on that in terms of details and, and costs, so, so that's sort of where we're headed, that's the bottom line, we'll circle back to that again. Uh, I'm not gonna go through the fine print here, but essentially, the committee was formed in February, we got off the ground in March. We have a timeline, uh, activities that we'll come back to later here, but we've been having a variety of meetings and, uh, with both, uh, uh, town boards and committees, as well as other folks, uh, in the surrounding area over this time. March, April, May, June, next slide please, Vanessa, and all the way through December, and, uh, we've got several tracks here, one is the fu- the site concerns, plant site, what the ground discharge sites, and then communication with other communities and, and funding sources, uh, again, all important aspects to keep, uh, going along, you've got seven members of the community. We have a work plan that is, uh, uh, divvied up responsibilities along these tracks for people, we've identified point people who are gonna be pursuing some of these things. For example, Bob Moss is on the committee, Bob has actually built these systems for Madison Place and others, and is a good connection in the local development community, and so he's out talking to his colleagues in the development world to figure out, are there people who would sign onto this system if we bought it, if we built it? And one of Bob's comments is, he, for Madison Place, would in an instant, uh, decommission that system at Madison Place and sign onto this because i- it's a hassle to run. And the, the interesting financial wrinkle is that if you actually have a, an internal system at Madison Place, uh, the developer or landlord has to pay for that. If you have it tied into a municipal system, the municipal, municipal system cost can be billed to the tenants in the facility. And so there's great incentive for people who have apartment, uh, and condo projects like Madison Place to actually be, uh, participate in this kind of system, so, again, um, the, uh, the plan for the coming months is to pursue the sites and find a way to get an agreement for both the kind of sites that we need. Financing option, the district improvement financing is an interesting one, that's a state program, uh, structured program, we've got a go-to-town meeting for approval for it, but you define a, uh, an area of town, a list of parcels that potentially could benefit from this system by hooking into it. And then you measure the assessed value of that list of properties today, and going forward, if there's increased value from those properties, ideally based on the use of the system, you can allocate some of the additional tax revenue to pay for the cost of the system down the road. Bad news is, you gotta have the system running to be able to do that, and you don't get the initial construction cost from the diff financing. So, similar kind of thing with betterments for, uh, people who use the system or might use the system, you can charge a betterment fee, but again, that comes later in the process. We've already applied for one-stop grant, we didn't get it, we're looking for other grants, we'll apply again in twenty-fifth, by twenty-seven for one stop. There are loans, there are zero-interest and low-interest loans from a variety of sources for this, there's a state revolving fund for infrastructure loans, it's very attractive. People use all sorts of things, we've looked at Yarmouth that has built a system, for example, Yarmouth, I count, had twelve or thirteen different sub-funding sources for it. So it was a real potpourri of, of funding sources there, that, uh, many of which were from state programs that are no longer available, unfortunately, but, but we're looking far and wide for those kind of, of sources. So again, we wanna continue communication with neighbors and, and, uh, others with system and implementation experience going forward, and next slide, Vanessa. This is our longer-term plan through twenty-nine, and it's probably gonna take longer than that, and too small, too small to read, it's in the packet for anybody who's interested, uh, in a readable form. But, um, again, you need to think about the structure of the pieces here, um, interesting thing, uh, one of our members, Alan Belniak, i- in his day job, is actually doing some artificial intelligence work. And he has taken a lot of the things that people have done with these systems, dumped them into an IAI system, and put together a work plan that talks about details there that is frighteningly comple- complete. It is pretty interesting technology, we're not gonna use that solely, but that's a, an interesting aid that will help us organize the work steps that are out there, and, uh, uh, we collected a whole bunch of stuff, information over the last forty, fifty years in terms of these, there's nineteen eighty-something, uh, uh, engineering plan for a system in town. Application for the, uh, at that time, Metropolitan District Commission was turned into the MWA system. And so all that kind of stuff is, is useful background information, so you put all that in the bucket and see what the IAI, IAI stuff comes up with, and we may learn some things there, so, very interesting. So again, this is high-level view, final slide, Vanessa, back to where we're looking for help from you folks. Again, help site acquisition, connect coordination with external parties, and again, when we come to town meeting for requests for funds, uh, we would hopefully appreciate the help, so. You missed anything?
No.
Well, I, I'll refer all questions. He, he's the engineer in the crowd, so he knows the details that I don't understand, so, so questions, comments?
First comment, that's the first time I've heard the word potpourri.
I get fifteen penalty points for that one, I guess.
Usually it's pooperi, right?
We, we won't, we won't go into the wastewater jokes from the committee, but.
No.
I have two questions, one is, um, the support for design funding that you were thinking of, do you think that's gonna be specific to a particular site, you need to fix the site first and then, or, or, and then a related, another question is, do you, did we get any feedback on the unsuccessful one-stop?
We've requested it, and Vanessa actually is working to coordinate.
Good, cuz that's ve- very, I mean, we, the, the application we got was as, was one where it was second attempt.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And the feedback was very helpful in.
Right.
Having the, putting together the second application.
And we've gotten the FY twenty-six awards, and so we've got a, a subgroup working on looking at those awards and getting information we can out of that to sharpen the effort for twenty-seven.
And we should also think about if there's any, um, maybe, um, if there's any match component to that, there may be also be private sources that could match.
Yeah.
Uh, provide a match for a gr- for a application like that.
And we've actually talked to some developers about that, and people are interested conceptually, but, uh, relatively smaller, I mean, not, not enough money to actually, you know, build anything or whatever, but that's, again, a, a useful source of funds, every dollar helps. So, in terms of the design piece, again, uh, the, the site, uh, evaluation is the key, and I guess, Brian, you probably know more about this than I do, but we would expect to have at least one or two key sites that we think we might be able to get a deal with, and then we go in and do a more detailed evaluation.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and again, it's a, a valuation for the discharge site that I think is the most critical, uh, piece of it now. You know, you can take a less, uh, desirable piece of land for a plant, and as long as you can convey that treated wastewater to the discharge site, uh, that, that's feasible to do, but being able to focus on getting the evaluations that need to be done on the discharge site is, is the key thing, and we don't have, you know, one specific site in mind right now, there are options, and like whatever funding we would seek, um, would, needs to be refined further, you know, exactly where that would be spent and what, you know, what sites we would be looking at.
Hopefully one, but maybe a couple, depending on availability, so.
Tim?
Uh, this is a great presentation, um, my, my one thought or question was around the, the potential sites, like, right now, I know that that was a, a sticking point earlier on in the, trying to find some, so, how many, how many total right now do you think kind of exist, or like, what's the specificity around feasibility of like site locations or site opportunities that your process has kind of brought up?
We, we talked about three or four, but it's, it's an interestingly complicated process in that, uh, you know, do you build the whole thing at once and run a line all the way down Route Nine? Or do you focus on the western end or the eastern end, there's some parcels on the eastern end that you could think about, uh, developing there, and try to expand then, and technically, you could actually build a plant with expansion capability and do part of it, ideally, you wanna do it where you can get the most volume early on in the system. So depending on how that comes out, as to where, where you look east or west or whatever, and, uh, so it, again, there's no clear winner in terms of site at this point, but there are several options at least. In particular, around the Dell property there, I mean, that's someplace that obviously you're gonna get some development, and, um, Al, you may have other thoughts about that one.
I, I think, um, you know, we don't have to build the whole system all at once, I think we need to have a plan for what the whole system might look like, we can do it in, in pieces. The other thing that I think is worth thinking about carefully is, you know, we've talked about this as, um, commercial development, and, um, it's pretty clear people are also beginning to think about, um, apartments and multifamily housing. And multifamily housing actually has some desirable characteristics in terms of, of impacts on our town finances. If you look at, um, Madison Place, for example, there are about, only about thirty-five students that come out of, of Madison Place that go to our schools, which is, we all know is the big driver of, of our budgets, and that's, covers a hundred and sixty-eight units, so that's, um, I think you can actually make a careful, carefully constructed argument that, um, multifamily housing, um, may be almost as advantageous as a purely commercial development, and that could also, uh, be a potential source of funding, uh, for something like this, again, it's, it requires, you know, a sharp use of the pencil. We've also helped with our affordable housing goals, but that's another matter, but, um, so, we don't have to build the whole system all at once. I think we have to have an idea about how we would build the whole system, but we can certainly build it in pieces.
And from a financial standpoint, Al has pointed out that I think we get three point six million of tax revenue for parcels along Route Nine today. If you look at what other towns with wastewater systems get out of their commercial property along major highways, it's multiples that, as a matter of fact, so, again, huge opportunity there, depending on how you do it, and, uh, again, as I said previously, you gotta do it thoughtfully, which I think we, we can do and should do certainly. But, uh, there's substantial upside, and that, at least as far as our committee is concerned, is a long-term solution to this pressure on individual residential property tax rates, it keeps on generating that money.
Kathy?
All very interesting, of course, um, hard to put it all together, I'm amazed that the Westborough plant is that big, I didn't know it was.
Well, they serve, they serve Shrewsbury.
Right, yeah, cuz you know.
And part of Hopkinton.
And it's pretty much townwide systems too, you know, the, and that was built at a time when communities paid ten cents on the dollar. Either the federal, state government paid ninety cents on every dollar for those projects, and a lot of communities took advantage of that and implemented townwide programs. It's, it coincidentally came across a plan.
Yeah.
From nineteen seventy or so.
Seventy-five, yes.
That showed a townwide sewer layout for Southborough.
That our select board voted not to pursue.
Yeah, we, we, we've definitely missed the boat on this, no doubt about it.
Who were those?
Um. So, and I know you've already talked to Westborough about this, so Westborough has no more capacity to give to us, right?
Well, um, n- not to us, certainly, uh, they, they have development plans themselves, of course, and, uh, are loathe to give that away, they're gonna, they, they may have to develop additional wastewater capacity themselves, so, um, you know.
Their challenge is, they cannot, they're not gonna be able to get an increase in the permitted flow that they discharge to the Assabett River, so they're locked into that plant capacity now. And they serve the towns of, what, you know, Westborough and Shrewsbury, which are, you know, much more developed than our town is, and it's, it's just gonna be very hard to spring any of that capacity loose from those two communities.
And Marlborough discharges into the river as well, so they're limited there too.
So as far as location, the plan is for you to come back sometime between now, April eleventh is the annual town meeting, between now and then, to talk about a specific location or two, right?
Right.
That you really have narrowed down, um, that we then work on trying to acquire one way or the other, right?
And assess its capacity to serve as the ground discharge site.
Okay.
Key step.
I'm just trying, I mean, this is already November, middle of November, right? So, you know, we only got, what, five months before? So, but you're, you're hoping that maybe by the time we get to April eleventh, you're going to have the ability to ask for what we need to actually design a system.
To, to evaluate the site.
Okay. To evaluate the site, is it a six-figure number or a seven-figure number?
We're talking about a few hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's not seven-figure for the first evaluation. But, you know, it's, it's got the potential to grow into those numbers though.
Because the budget looks horrible, just so you know, for fifty seven.
The total cost for one of these systems, you got to have the plant, the discharge site, and the collection system is the pipes up and down Route nine. Could be thirty million, forty million, fifty million dollars depending on how you do it. It's a big number. And, and that's why we've talked about doing it in phases as well. So again, though, you know, that Littleton's was about close in the forties, for example, and their capacity is close to what we're talking about here. So good model.
So would the design funding give you an idea of the total cost and the amount that you need to appropriate ways through ransom?
At the end of that process.
It would certainly help, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So I'm not scared of apartments either. Thirty five is actually the highest number of kids at Madison Place since inception. It started off with seventeen, then went to twenty five. But of course, they're all one and two-bedroom apartments, except for the thirty eight that got added as, as townhomes at the end. So, you know, one and two-bedroom apartments aren't conducive to a lot of kids. But I'm not scared of adding kids because of apartments either. But, um, all right, so we just got to wait till you come back, right? To figure out what we're going to try to do at annual town meeting.
Yep. Yes.
Do you happen to know the reason that the, is it federal government? Decided that no more effluent could go into waterways?
Well, the EPA has been very touchy about that all the way on. On the other hand, I, you know, I hate to be flip, but the, the federal government is under great pressure nowadays. So who knows, it, it might not be surprising to have all requirements lifted, who knows? But that's bad news.
Part of it too is an effort to keep water local as it's taken from, I think Westboro and Shrewsbury both have well systems. So as water is taken out of the ground there and put into the Assabette, there's a net draw of those aquifers. Was involved in a study years ago that looked at, you know, if there were, if there was an expansion to the Westboro plant or the Marlboro plant, could that additional flow be discharged locally within the communities rather than discharged to the river? And that's an option technically, just feasibly trying to, again, put in that infrastructure, identify vacant land to support a groundwater discharge within those communities proved to be too challenging, so it wasn't done. But the cap has always been, you know, no more, no increase in flow to the rivers.
And one follow-up, if, if there is basically a discharge area, which is sort of a leaching field basically, isn't it? Does that go back into the aquifer?
Yeah, and again, our drinking water, looking at our community, so we get ours from the M W R A. So we would be, that would be a net add to our.
But if a person is on a well, is the effluent going back into the groundwater? Would it come back, would it resurface in, in well water?
And I think that's part of the studies that we would, the, the evaluations that we need to take and look at at the site. You know, what, where are those sites? Where are their private drinking water wells and location to those sites? Would there be that impact?
Potentially, yeah. On the other hand, this, this effluent, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, is fairly highly treated effluent that comes out of these systems. So we're not talking about, you know, hugely contaminated effluent after the treatment process. In fact, there are systems, there are towns that actually use drinking water made from wastewater. And so you can treat it to make it, bring it up to potable water standards. And people do drink that in, in Midwest towns where they got real aquifer problems. So be careful when you're in Kansas with a drinking fountain.
The, the reality is anyone in town who has a well, you know.
And a septic.
And a septic system, and we all have septic systems, is, is, is really dealing with that reality today.
Already.
Yeah.
Okay, I see that Mr. Robbins has a comment. When do you come up to the?
I'm always amazed at the night shift and how you all work on probably the most complicated project this town has ever had and will have for years to come. What you've done and decided to do is an enormous step forward for this town, long waited by many, addressing critical issues like taxes for the residential community that sees no end to a rising cost of our homes. My challenge, not my challenge, but I ask you to consider Costco has done this in numerous communities. What is it you're doing or can we be doing with them to understand the lessons learned when they've worked with other communities? So we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Sam and Brian, what you have launched is a critical piece and has been a concern of businesses on Route nine that individuals I have known. And everybody's gone to sleep when we've talked about it. And you've raised the level of concern to a great way. But we need to talk with other communities and how they do it. But most importantly, how are we collaborating with the business community on Route nine? When are we bringing them into the fold to discuss how we can do this and work together? When are we going to learn, not learn, when are we going to talk to Costco and how they created a collaborative effort? Because the rumors go, oh, they're coming in and they're going to cause every business in town to shut down. How do we count, how do we address that? So the exciting part is, how do we bring next week, leaders of the various, not next week, but at a fruitful time, the business community and what their thoughts are and how do we need to go? So they are partners and not sitting back waiting to see what happens to them. And Costco should very, with all the lessons they have learned politically and otherwise, they can enable us to avoid the pitfalls that other communities have had with this. And I hope we're going to the federal government. There was a time here several years ago when the feds came in and said, we can bring you certain, and Sam, you may recover this. We were offered septic, not septic, sewer, and we turned it down. So we've changed, the great ship has left and you're leading it. And I think, how, how can we bring this whole community together as partners as opposed to, oh, we've got to tell them about the sewer costs next week, it's something else. How do we include them? And again, I can't say, you have all done noble work, bringing this to the town meeting and winning so well. It's, it's better than watching a football game almost. You did, you worked your tails off and you won. Maybe we ought to have some videos to inspire us, but keep up the great work. This is, this is the most important thing I think this town has ever done since I've been here because it's going to change the course of history in our town in terms of the businesses that come. Who do we attract? How do we attract them? When are they going to become partners of this discussion as opposed to, let's just tell them after we voted for it? I wish you continued great success. Thank you.
Thank you. We've started that process, Chris, and we'll continue it certainly, so thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you. I will comment that it is very enjoyable being on this side of the table. It's much calmer and quieter, so thank you. Very, very good experience, uplifting.
Well, you both should know.
Okay, is there any other comment? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very, very helpful.
So I just have a brief chair's report on the Veterans Day services, which we had our annual Veterans Day services last Tuesday. Steve Wynot and Dan Kalenda led the ceremonies as they have for past several years. And they were, it's very valuable. And there were two notable things. One, it was very cold. And two, there was a presentation by Anita Reader, whom we presented a certificate of appreciation that was really well received. She made a presentation, I think it's an organization called Quilts of Valor. They make quilts to honor veterans. And there was a ceremony where the quilts were presented to several of the veterans. And it was a very moving ceremony and it was also appropriate because as I said, it was so cold. So I know Al was there, Margaret was there, and I think we were well represented. So that's all I have to say on that. Are there any members' reports?
One brief thing that we should correct publicly because it's, it's on the blog as the wrong date. So we've changed the joint meeting between capital school advisory and select board to twelve eight from twelve nine. I assume it's still six thirty and still at the public safety building.
Correct.
Right, but we've moved it back, or moved it up a day because I guess there was a conflict. So it's twelve eight now, which is a Monday, I believe.
Yes. Any other members' reports? Mark?
So just one other administrative piece too. When Mr. Ballantyne presented the, the budget calendar to the board, you know, we had, we'd done some work with the clerk's office and with the school and looking at available dates. And we settled on April eleventh, Saturday, April eleventh for town meeting. We'd circulated that with council and everything. It seems that we've not really circulated it far enough, so I just wanted to be clear, April eleventh is town meeting. So assuming everyone's shaking their heads, so after this meeting, we'll send something out to all boards, committees, everything, and make sure that everybody is aware that that is the date for annual town meeting. So two things that, that I, you know, you know, oftentimes we don't always do a lot of good news. Let's do some good news. So two pieces. The first one, I just wanted to acknowledge Taylor West, our health director. She received the Sandra Collins Public Health Nursing Award from the Mass Health Officers Association. You know, we know how good our employees are. It's really nice when they're recognized by their peers and on a statewide level. This award's in honor of Sandra Collins, who is a past Mass Health Officers Association Board of Directors member. She was a leader in the field of public health nursing, both in Massachusetts and beyond. She shared her nursing experience with this, within the organization, other professional associations, and numerous state and national committees and organizations. She was a strong advocate for the nursing profession and supported public health. The award is presented annually to a public health nurse who is a member of the association, who has demonstrated exceptional dedication in carrying out the public health mandates of a regional or local municipal agency, so.
This is a statewide award to one person from Southboro, so this is great.
Absolutely. So again, kudos to Taylor. And like I said, I think it's great. I, I really enjoy announcing these type of things. You know, again, we know they're great. We just agree, you know, we like when other people notice that as well, so. One other thing, this was just passed along today to me from the police chief. There's an article, I believe it's out already in the community advocate or will be in the new community advocate. On November thirteenth, our Southboro first responders put together a basketball team and they played against the Algonquin Unified Basketball. Great game, great event, you know, very well received. We did lose eighty-one to forty-nine, you know, but, but the score is not the intent and everything in that. But it's a really great program and I applaud the chief, both chiefs and the officers who attended and played in the game. It really is a, you know, a, a good event, you know, for the athletes, for the public safety. And, you know, it's, this is the second annual year and I'm sure it's something that's going to continue. So kudos to, to the departments and to the athletes for continuing this, this game.
Sounds a little like the Globetrotters and the Washington team that always.
Exactly, yes. Good analogy.
Good for them.
Okay, are there any holds on the consent agenda?
Minutes, both of them.
Any other holds? I move that the board approve consent agenda items B, C, and D.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so minutes?
All right, so let's start with the fourth. So on line two sixty, excuse me, one sixty-three, the contract with the golf course management company ends actually twelve thirty-one twenty-six, not twenty-five. Okay, so I'll go for that one.
Any other, does anyone else have any corrections to the November four minutes? Okay, and then do you have any corrections to the November twelve minutes?
Line thirty-five is a, just a typo, said date should be data. Going in multi-year projection, the more unreliable the data comes, okay? Line thirty-nine was being reviewed, I think, so Tim, help me. When the name of the committee, the community center committee, not senior center committee?
It was the Community Center Exploratory Committee.
All right, so Community Center Exploratory Committee, Bridgette. That's it for that one.
I have one as well for that one. So line thirty-eight as well, Mr. Flynn questioned the capital cost of Finn School. I questioned the timeline of repairs for the capital costs. So it was showing twenty sixty, the number from the Community Center Exploratives was about fifteen years, which we'd be approaching within ten, so it's more of the timeline.
I move that the board approve the open session meeting minutes for November four and, and twelve as amended?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Thank you for being gentle for my minutes.
You did a good job.
So then turning to other matters for the pilot update, I think this is yours, Kathy?
It is, it is. Vanessa, do you have this that you can pop on the screen? So to refresh everyone's memory, I've been the liaison to the private schools since I've been on the board. I asked to do it because I used to sit on a private school board, so I kind of know how they, they work and what they look at and how they come up with budgets and how they come up with things like pilot payments, which they don't like to call pilot payments, donations. So I've shown you one, two, three, four, five, seven years of payments from the four schools, St. Mark's, Bay, New England Children's Center, and Harvard. So they've gone up. Remember again, these are donations. These are totally voluntary, they don't have to pay a penny if they don't want to. As long as you are a five-on-C-three state law, basically exclude you from paying real estate taxes. And that includes all your property, including the houses that people live in, et cetera. So we basically are, begging may not be the right word, but asking there's, there's nothing we can do to require the payments. So I just, we'll tell you this, Andrew Pfaff has gone with me to most of these meetings, Mark's been to some of them. I, I'm happy with what Harvard did. Harvard doubled their payment and agreed to actually make this payment. They actually have agreed that they're going to do this going forward. We don't have to ask again and they're going to increase it by inflation. So they doubled it first and then it's going to grow by inflation. Harvard, as you know, has a bookstore over in the corner of Southboro and Marlboro on Parramatta Road. They also agreed to store a lot of Jim Haggerty's old records and are doing it in a very climate-controlled manner. They actually built a piece for him to use there, so they did that too as part of this agreement. So that was Harvard. St. Mark's for the last few years has been donating a significant amount as far as they look at it. And it's gone up each year. They, they understand inflation, they understand that our budget goes up. They have also tentatively agreed that, that they understand that we would prefer that they not take any more property off the tax rolls. So I am hoping that that doesn't happen, that if they do, they would make a payment equal to the real estate taxes that we would lose. NEC is a little bit different, so I just want to remind everybody what the deal is here. Tony Kwan used to own a lot of the property that NEC sits on on Route nine. And as part of the deal, he made them agree that they would continue to pay, make payments equal to the real estate taxes that we were going to lose on that property. So that's where their number comes from. They pay religiously. What we're working on now is trying to get that number. What we're working on now is trying to get that number index for inflation, so they've kept it the same for a few years. So I'm hoping that's going to go up a little bit. The only disappointment, and I'm not going to say a whole lot about this, is Fay School. And we've worked very hard to get Fay to contribute more. They've got a, probably the tightest budget of the three schools in town. They would like to point out that they do a whole lot for the town besides writing checks. And they do, it's true. So does St. Mark's. We get a whole lot of in-kind contributions from both schools. But it doesn't pay our bills. They still don't, you know, it still doesn't pay the police and fire and DPDB services they do use. If these schools paid their share of the services they actually use, the numbers they would pay would be five times this. The state, I believe it's the House, has had a bill, pending bill for a long time to require 501(c)(3)'s to pay 25% of the taxes they would normally pay, which is trying to get at what the costs are of the things they actually use. And it just seems to, it's not going to go anywhere. It's just sitting in committee. I think that the lobbies for the schools are too strong to overcome it. So it just sits there. It's probably going to die there. So unless that changes, we will continue to talk to these schools and try to see if we can get the donations increased. But it's, it's really up to them. But they have gone up, so we've gone from what, 160, 161 to 281 over seven years. So they've gone up more than inflation. They've gone up probably something close to what our budget increases have been over those years. But still a very small piece of services they actually use.
Thank you. Very good work. You can see there's made some progress made. And I think you want us to take a vote to formally accept the Harvard pilot payment, right? I move that we accept the Harvard pilot payment.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone else have any other comments or point suggestions? Yes, no?
No.
Okay. All right, so the next item on the agenda, a policy proposal for board approval to fill open positions. This is your item. Al?
Thank you. So we're moving up in the state rankings, unfortunately. I looked at it today and our taxes on the single-family home have, in 2022, we were 30th out of 351 and we've moved up to 28th, sandwiched between Stowe and Topsfield, two communities which have significantly less commercial development than we do. And I suspect that if we looked at the 2026 numbers, we would probably be moving up in that ranking again.
So 32 to 28?
From 30 to 28, 30th to 28.
Absolute dollars to the 13K that's on the average house is what we're talking about if you just rank.
It says, well, it's, yes, this comes out of the state tax databases. I think there's a broad realization that we, something has to change and that we have an unsustainable business model. Because, you know, right now we are in a debt lull and we know that we're going to be facing some significant debts as we finally deal with our school issues. And we just heard tonight that, you know, we're facing a substantial healthcare cost for our current employees and will probably be looking at something for our retirees as well. And of the roughly $19 million that this board is responsible for, that is, you know, DVW, police, fire, all of the things that fall under our purview, well over 70% of that is in salaries and benefits. And we've, when, as a manager over the years, you know, the, the single most important sort of regular decision I made was whether to hire and who to hire. Those are the critical decisions. And we have got to begin to take a hard look at how we are organized just within the things within our purview. And that is our, that is our responsibility. And we have to question the way we are doing business. Our business processes in many cases are frankly obsolete. And so I, I believe that for, between now and the beginning of May, we need to, anytime there is an open position, this board should review that position, should ask, you know, what are the things that that person is doing or that position is doing, not that person? And is there an alternative way that we could organize to create, to provide those services? We just can't continue on the way we are. I think each and every one of us has heard from the citizens of the town about, you know, complaints about the level of taxation. And so I'm going to make a motion, which is that between now and the 1st of May, that this board will require that for any position under its purview, that job posting must be approved by this board. I think it's time we started taking a hard look at our operational processes.
Well, first, I'll, is there a motion?
You made the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, so I understand your proposal. I'm not going to support it. And so the most practical thing that this affects is the position that Katie just left, the split Select Board Treasurer position. I think there's a, you know, a positive history about there about how that position evolved from separate full-time positions under the Select Board and the Treasurer. And I know others can probably explain that a little bit better than I can. So I think it's an example of a shared position that's worked well. I also, I understand the point you're making about taking a hard look about allocating resources. I think that, for me, I think the best way to do that is through the annual budget process, which we're entering into soon. I think that's a fairer way of doing this in that, you know, rather than have a situation where any department head who just happens to have someone resigned to go to a different job, to someone accidental, they're the one that's up on the spotlight justifying a resource that Town Meeting has already funded. I don't think that we're, if the premises that we're overstaffed in these departments, I don't agree with that. You know, also, we had talked earlier about taking appointments for positions like this completely off the Select Board agenda and lending the managers manage. And I think I agree with that. I think that there's got to be a role for people who have the most day-to-day knowledge of the operations that we're talking about to make an informed judgment on whether to fund the position. At a certain point, we have to trust people to, if they see an opportunity to combine positions in the way like that happened with this position, to let them really make the judgment on that. I also think that it's not good for morale. So those are my reasons. I also think it makes sense to hear from Brian and Mark about this because I know that the most immediate effect of the motion that you're making would be to have, lose a resource for both Treasurer and the Select Board Office.
I want to make it clear, I am not suggesting we eliminate the position. I am suggesting that we review the functions and ask what those functions are and if there is an alternative way to provide those functions.
Can I add a little color to this conversation?
Sure.
I did a little research. So the presentation that we did, that Al led at town, special town meeting, focused on headcount on the town side, left out the schools. Schools are 2/3 of the budget. So I went back and actually added the schools in over the last 10 years. So if we add the schools in, we've actually only added a net of 11 people, which is a total over 10 years of less than 3%, which is 0.3% a year. So it's a much different number when you put everything together as far as the personnel of the whole town budget. I've got it here department by department. Now, I also adjusted with the fact that we added, you know, we brought internally our IT group, Hassan and Jay were added. We used to outsource that, so I adjusted for that because that didn't seem fair. But if you take a look at department by department, what we have added in hours over the last 10 years, there's only two that stick out as far as the town side, and that is police, which is by far the biggest number. And then we've got Youth Commission. And I know why we did Youth Commission. We did this a few years ago. It was done on purpose after a plea from, from their board, heartfelt plea. So putting that one aside, the police are 90% of this number. So that's where the increase has been the last 10 years, is the staff of the police department. It's not fire either. Fire's added very little, so it's all police. So instead of painting this broad brush that we've added all these people, I think we should be a little bit more specific and understand that it really is on the town side, the increase in the police department that has caused the headcount to increase 80% of that. But overall, it's only 11 people over all this time. Now, I also don't think that the people that work here are overpaid as a rule. I think if anything, it may be the other way around. Yes, the cost of people's a lot because of all the benefits. The benefits probably add 40% to the cost with the healthcare and the pension. The pension goes up 11 and 1/2% a year because we're underfunded, so that's a big piece of the healthcare. So I agree that those benefits are a large part of the cost of people. But I just don't think we've got a headcount problem from what I'm looking at. I really think it's, it's, it's other items in this budget. It's a small town. We've got fixed cost. We can't control the pension. We can't control what the state gives us. They don't, state number doesn't keep up with inflation. They give us what, 1% or 2% increase every year? So we have to fund more and more of the budget through our real estate tax stuff because what the state doesn't do. So there's a lot of factors that go into why we have the tax burden we do, and we're not alone. I think many of the towns around us are in the same boat that we are. Southborough doesn't stick out as a big anomaly here. I don't think so. I, I guess I'm fine discussing it, but I just don't think we should leave the impression that we've got this overabundance of people that we don't need, because I don't think we do.
Tim?
I don't see this as an overabundance of people problem. I see it as an allocation problem, and that's why I would support it. And I think that all it is is bringing it back to us to say, do we need another police officer this year? Or do we need an admin staff? Is there an opportunity to change up the admin staff into a different role? We don't want to do layoffs. We've said that plenty of times. This gives an opportunity, when there is a headcount change, to examine it at our level and say, would we rather put this someplace else? And that's why I think that that's all we're doing, is saying, should we keep it there? Do we need that capability? And then say, yes. We don't have to say no to everything. I don't know if the current position that's open is something that we should necessarily vote against or, and choose not to fill it and move that to a different location. But we have a certain amount of headcount to maintain if we don't want to keep raising taxes or reduce. This is a chance to not have a position just get posted again. If we have a larger plan that thinks that it might be outside of our opportunity, when it comes up during a year, we should review it at least at a base level.
Marguerite?
Mark, who did the last Personnel Study for the town?
Paying Class Study or the Public Safety Study or?
The Job Description.
That'd be the Collins Center.
All right. And I would say that the Collins Center job descriptions, as I've had experience with them, is that they change hugely because someone will come in as an employee and they do a certain number of things. And then maybe technology changes and they add more things into that, and there's more and more and more. Because, guess what? It's not static. Everyone is in jobs that become more complex. I really can't see cutting down the number of people that we have without heavily reading what those job descriptions are. And I, I just don't see anywhere to cut it. I would, I would feel very presumptuous going into any department and telling them that they could lose an employee or a track within, I guess track's the academic word, losing a job description within the department as if I knew more about it than they did. I, I really would find that very presumptuous anyway, so I don't, I don't support this.
Mark or Brian, I don't know if you want to offer any input on this because I know it would directly impact.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just make a few comments. I, you know, I appreciate, appreciate the discussion. I'm not going to repeat some of the things that have been said. You know, I know that this, this position that, you know, in the Select Board Office that we're talking about, you know, people need to realize this was a 40-hour position up until about five years ago. And through employee changes, through retirement, you know, we brought someone in and reduced the position to 34 hours. Over the past couple of decades since Mr. Ballantyne's been here as Finance Director, he's lost a 40-hour position. And there has been discussions and this board has had discussions and advisories had discussions about adding back into, for various reasons, into the Treasurer's Office some hours. And given the changes we made, we had capacity in our office. We felt there was capacity. And so rather than adding another FTE or adding something back in the Treasurer's Office, we split the position. And so we have 17 hours now out of a 40-hour position that we once had, and we've given 17 in the Treasurer's Office. And, you know, I think it was the person that was in the position that made it successful, but also the position itself, you know, has worked very well. And, you know, I, I think it's, I think it's the way we should be doing things when these opportunities present itself. And, you know, we're not the only ones. The Assessors Office had a 40-hour position that they have moved on from in the past several years, and now it's a shared position with the Board of Health. Clerk's Office had a 40-hour position that they have now reduced to a part-time position. And, you know, so I, I think there's, there's opportunities, you know, and we should take advantage of them. But I also think it should be done the right way. I know that, you know, Mr. Hamilton has been involved with Matt Probst, Jay Montijo, myself, Melanie Otska, to take a look at creating some efficiencies in departments and trying to figure out how we can use technology to help people do things better and to free up time. And, and I think that Matt Probst in July put out a, an email and a structure as to how to go about this. And I think it, you know, makes a good roadmap on, on how to get there. And gaining traction on some of these opportunities then opens up other opportunities for us to take a look at positions, to look at staffing and to figure those things out. But I think it needs to be done holistically rather than simply trying to address something simply because it's an open position. The one other thing I do want to point out, Ally who had said about, you know, the fire chief is, the fire department's under our purview. Fire chief is under our purview. Fire chief is a strong manager, so he's, he's got pointing authority.
Understood.
So I, I, just minor point, but, but I, I guess I'll, I'll leave it there.
Brian, do you have any comments?
Not that I'm lazy, but yeah, so I'll just echo Mark's comments. And, you know, the position, I don't disagree that eventually, and I think Mark may agree with this, that if we're talking four, five, six years down the road, we may actually look at that position again and maybe change that or maybe have another opportunity to change that. Now, no, but down the road, absolutely. I, I, I think, yeah, we could have more technology in the next few years and, and take another look at it. I would like everything to be consistent. I find a policy where Department A and Department B have two exact same situations, but one can be reviewed and the other won't be. That's, that's a problem. That's not, I know it's a start, but it's a problem. So I, I like the holistic approach too. I just think that's the way to go.
So Al, just to be clear as far as what group of employees you think should be part of this policy? You're talking about everybody but school?
I, I'm, right now, I'm talking about all of the departments with the exception of fire. Sorry. Well played. That report to this board. So for example, the library doesn't report to. That report to this board. So for example, the library doesn't report to us.
The assessor's not there. Planning board wouldn't be there.
Right, right. The only, that's the only, only the departments that we have the authority to actually act on. Because that's in our purview. I understand, you know, look, the long run, we have to use technology to substitute for labor. We don't have a choice. Yeah, I've been working with Matt to try and get that before this board, and on December second, he's going to be here to talk about moving forward on that plan. What I am quite concerned about is, you know, if we don't start doing this, the voters, I think, will. I'll tell you right now, I'm deeply bothered by this rubber stamp process where after the offer has been made, you know, it comes before us for a rubber stamp, and I'm tired of being a rubber stamp, to be blunt. I'm not sure I'm going to vote in favor of any positions where I'm just being asked to be a rubber stamp. But I want, you know, I think that's disrespectful to this board. If we're going to have an impact, I think we need to actually behave as managers and people whose thoughts and opinions on hiring is actually important. Something's got to change and, you know, sorry, Brian, but five or six years down the road, no. You know, this, in the last two years, we have been hearing a steady drumbeat from people who are complaining about their taxes in a way that they haven't in the past. And we've got, you know, if you don't like my plan, we have to come up with a better plan then. You know, that's my way of beginning to address this. You know, substituting technology for labor is the medium and long-term solution. But I'm concerned that, you know, if we don't do something, the voters are going to do something for us as we look at two and a half overrides. So, you know, we can go ahead and vote. I think it's pretty clear how this is going to go.
Don't be so sure.
Mrs. Faniff?
Yeah, I thought Kathy was going to say something.
No, go ahead, Bonnie.
Bonnie Faniff, one seventy-nine, middle row. I appreciate the discussion, but if someone didn't sit at the front table or knew the operations of the town hall and the employees' positions, it would be helpful to have an organizational chart demonstrating what Mr. Purple just stated. The elimination of positions, the shared positions, or the positions that are vacant today. Because this is going to be very difficult to explain at town meeting. If there are vacancies today, we should know what they are. If they happened two, three, four years ago and then it fills, that is a positive insight as to what we're doing and how we're streamlining things. So I think an organizational chart that's under your jurisdiction would be helpful for the general public. Thank you.
There's so much that's excluded from this, though. So you exclude library because they've got their elected board. You exclude planning board because they're elected. But then you bring in youth and family service. They have a board. They're disappointed and not elected. You exclude the fire chief because he's strong. You bring in the police chief because he, you understand what I'm saying when I say weak? That's how it's labeled. You leave out school completely. So it just seems like it's not necessarily fair as far as excluding all that and the piece, the small piece that we really control, that's the piece that we do this. I still think this belongs in the annual budget process as far as this discussion goes. However, as we all know, we don't in the budget process generally reduce headcount, so I will acknowledge that. We may decide not to add headcount, which we have this year, but we usually don't do it. The first, the last time I remember we did that, I was on advisory and we, there was a person that was going to be laid off. Advisory thought it was a great idea, was very happy with the plan, thought the person who brought it forth had really thought through with it. And then all hell broke out at town meeting. So it's not easy to reduce headcount even if you want to on this town. But I'm just not quite yet, Al, that, but my vote's not as solid, no issue you might think it is. I agree that technology is going to have to start replacing things. But I just don't see with what I'm looking at here that headcount is really the problem that you think it is. I think it's other things.
I would add that Al's motion here is only for about a five-month timeframe. They get us back to annual town meeting, but then have the larger discussion. So it would be for the next five months of how do we operate? And do we potentially bring a reduced headcount position forward if this is a position that we would decide not to fill in the immediate term, which would still be something we could say yes or no to? So this is really just allowing us the opportunity. It's not saying we're not doing it. It would just allow us the opportunity to actually have this discussion versus rubber stamping, as Al said at the end, saying yes or no, and you're one of people when somebody's in front of you that's interviewed and gone through the entire process. It just gives us a different point in time to get involved.
So Marcy Jones is here. She has a comment question?
Evening, Select Board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Marcy Jones, eighteen Letta Squama, member of advisory but speaking as private citizen. I just wanted to say that I completely agree with Al's perspective. You are missing a big opportunity if when positions come open, you don't review what is the role? What are responsibilities? What's the workload? What alternatives have been tried? What's, you know, the proposal for this resource moving forward to meet the greatest need? And that is what most businesses and other government entities require of their managers. So I would echo the sentiment that upfront is the best time to do that. And you still may, you know, approve as is, but if you don't look at it, you're missing some opportunities to optimize resources in the town that are very, that we really need to look at. And that's my two cents for tonight. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comment for the whole discussion? Okay, so there was a motion that was made or seconded. So all those in favor? All those opposed? Well, the next uncontroversial topic is continued discussion of next steps for near school. Joint meeting we had with the school committee last week where we were on board with having, presenting some funding proposals at an annual town meeting in the spring for, yeah, I'm sorry, special town meeting in the spring before annual town meeting to fund feasibility and schematic designs for X number of different options. So this is not the type of number that we had at the annual town meeting to actually fund and borrow, to actually construct a topic, a building. But feasibility money so you could find out how much these different options cost. I thought this is a big step forward in terms of moving towards a resolution because, you know, one of the main criticisms I thought we had at the May town meeting is you're only giving us one option. A lot of people ask, did you consider this? Did you consider that? And then so many times that, I mean, there was some consideration of it, but I think that town meeting voters wanted the opportunity to have some more information, have some optionality. So I think that this is a big deal in terms of it's a very different approach than the approach we had at the last town meeting. So I feel like we hopefully would get, we in the school committee hopefully could get some more credit for that of taking a different approach of offering town meeting some different options. And I thought that in advance of our next joint meeting with the school committee on December eighth, where I think that's where it's going to start to focus on, okay, what options should we put on the town meeting warrant? That we could benefit from starting to discuss here and maybe even at the next meeting about, you know, how can we have that meeting be most efficient? There are, I think, some additional steps we should take for that meeting, some other information we should gather, or I have some, you know, thoughts. But, Tim, what are your thoughts coming out of that meeting?
Yeah, so we had four options that the school committee showed us, Greg specifically showed us, of those that the school committee covered. There's one missing from what we did over the summer that wasn't on that list that I think should be on that list to round it out to five that we should actually consider. And that was option B two. So that's a Finn expansion for one more grade, pre-K through two, and trottyer five through eight. Now, I don't know if it's the most favorable option. I know why the school committee didn't support it because it puts fifth grade into trottyer. But that option in a feasibility study would give us clear answers on space needs today that would actually put to rest a Plan B conversations that we've had. It would give us the data and the detail that would be, could we fit in our existing footprint? Would we not fit? Do we need to expand at the level that the pre-K through eight committee of the summer came up with as a number in the school committee drove for space needs for programming necessity? It was completely green, I believe. Maybe one was slightly yellow for there's trade-offs in a parameter. But it was one of the few options that was very, very green on all of the school educational considerations matrix that was put together. But it was left off, and I think that we, in our position, should force it back as something we would study as part of the next step. And that was one of the things I think we should study. The other two that I think are actually really viable is the Finn expansion to serve pre-K through three and the near full renovation. So those are the three that I think have the most viability and expense opportunity because every, the other. So what we left off the matrix as, and it's not the numbers that were on the screen, option B two, option B two, which is pre-K to two at Finn, and trottyer fifth through eighth. Option D, which is Finn expanded to serve pre-K to three. And option E, which is a near full renovation. Those were the three that have the most viability to be considered from my summer opinion, personal. And again, the reason I'd push for B two is it puts to bed the entire conversation about would we fit? And what the real parameters of expanding into that building is.
Do you have a view about how many different options should be on the warrant? Because each of these would have a price tag of seven figure or?
Seven figure? They're all eight.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
We talked about the total cost of the project?
No, 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 we're talking about for feasibility.
I mean, we, I don't have an opinion of feasibility right now. I'm thinking two fifty an option. Hopefully there's overlap between them that it gets more cost advantageous than that. So we're talking.
I guess where I was going is the more options that you consider, the more costly it is.
I see three options. And I think the third option, the B two option that was not shown by the school committee, is there to put to bed conversation about fitting existing footprints. So we can have a clear documented answer that's studied at an apples-to-apples comparison. Then that brings up, should fifth grade go into trottyer? And there's a lot of other conversations of that, which aren't going to be studied by that feasibility angle. That's personal opinion and professional opinion of school to where they go. But I think that the town has asked for that as an option in front of us to consider from a cost standpoint. We owe that to the town to have that studied. And if spending some money now to have that answered at this point in the process is the thing to do, then I, as much as I hate feasibility studies, I would support doing it.
Okay, we'll want to talk next.
I do.
Okay.
So, and I said this at the meeting, I do think that, you know, you can say all day long, the school committee does not support putting fifth grade at trottyer for X, Y, and Z. So that's great. They control the buildings. They've got the right to do that. But in the end, town meeting is going to provide the funding. So if town meeting doesn't buy that, they will just say no to the funding. So you're at an impasse again. So I agree with Tim that that alternative, which is putting the fifth grade at trottyer, has got to be dealt with. We've got two things to deal with, I think, before we bring, you know, two, three, four projects back to vote on. You've got to deal with the site. Is it the problem that some people said it was or is it not? We've got to find a way to take those two circles and pull them apart as far as why people voted no. Was it, how much of that was really site versus cost? And the survey gave us a little bit of information, but not enough as far as that goes. So I agree that, and I said that the other night, looking at Chelsea, that you're going to have to put that project on the table and cost it out. I mean, if you'd listened to the people who opposed the project in May, you would think that alternative costs zero, and that's just not correct. So you've got to have someone take a look at it, see what the impact is in that building, what are you going to lose? You've got to, you know, where are you going to put sand? They've got a lease. Where are you going to put SABAT? They've got a lease. Deal with all that. So I do believe that that's going to have to be one that at least gets looked at as far as the feasibility and the cost. Maybe it doesn't make it to the warrant because you can say, oh, well, this is still fifty million dollars. Makes no sense, whatever the number is. But I do think you're never going to take that one off the table. The people who voted were the Plan B supporters are never going to be satisfied until you actually cost that out and show it and compare it to the other ones. So I agree with Tim.
When you said it might never make it to the warrant, but you're talking.
Well, let's say you came back, I make up a number. Let's say you came back and that one was fifty million dollars. And it's not really a great idea. The school committee doesn't like it. So if other ones are also fifty or a little bit less, why would you pick that one?
But it wouldn't make it to the next one.
Yeah, I'm talking about where you actually vote, where you say, these are the three projects that we're bringing forth. This one costs fifty, forty, thirty. We're not going to leave here to, you pass one of them because we've got to get this thing done. So I agree with Tim. This has got to be dealt with one way or the other as far as what that alternative would cost. Because we never, there was never a cost assigned to that because it's not one that was studied much. So the people who support that were just able to say anything they want to as far as it goes. I've got Mr. Carmlett coming to my office in a week to talk about it again because he is just adamantly still thinking that is the way to go. He believes it sincerely. So until we actually can show what the details of doing that are objectively, I don't see how you take that one off the table.
Yeah, for the record, that one, B two, was estimated over the summer to be somewhere between forty-eight and sixty-one million dollars to meet the educational vision of the school.
Yeah, which is not quite zero.
It's not quite zero, but that's adding additions to two schools, complexity of two additions at two different schools, and then meeting a certain needs.
But you're just saying, you're just reinforcing my point. That's.
Having this studied properly to make sure it meets the educational vision and see what, how much space is there and is, would need to be added is really what this would come down to. So is it really somewhere between zero and sixty-one million dollars? I'd hope it's less than sixty-one, but you know.
The point is, it's a number, Tim. It's a number, and it's probably an eight-figure number. So it needs to be lined up with the others and so that you've got objectively looked at how, what happened, how you'd have to do it to truly do it. And then people can then say, okay, now I can see this, and it doesn't make sense or it does?
So one suggestion I wanted to make, I agree with Al where he said at the meeting that we should not support studying in any further way of a new four-grade school.
I don't agree with, you heard what Michael Newt said. I agree with everything Michael Newt said. Because again, let me just finish this. I'm the one, you know, I did this for five years. I know these numbers. If you look at the cost of a brand-new four-year school and you take into account the present value of the operational savings, you get to a number that's not much different than anything else, and you've got a brand-new school that has a layout that is conducive to educating kids in a much better way. So anyway, I'm going to lose this one, but I'm not, you know, I still think you shouldn't just throw it away completely. Yep, that's right, and we know that number.
This would be a proposal to do it without MSBA funding, right? It would seem just silly where we have the option to do that with MSBA funding and say, no. We studied it very carefully. We decided to do that same thing, just the more and more expensive way. That seems like such a ridiculous outcome that, and it's such a distraction from some people say, oh, look, they're trying to bring it back. And it's just a total headache. I'd just prefer to avoid it.
So I didn't know we were going to go into this tonight. I thought we were just talking about dates tonight, so I really wasn't ready to. I would look at this a lot closer if I thought we were going to go into.
Well, I just thought it would helpful, look, there's this meeting, and then there's one more meeting before the meeting on the eighth. I thought it'd be useful to start to just kick around, I mean, kick around some ideas instead of, what I don't want to have is, like the way we're. Like the way we're talking about it right now, was to talk about it on, on the gate. Hopefully we can be more as a board kind of. Organized. I'm not saying we're all going to have one view, but I, I mean, I think there's some basic things like, do we agree as a board on? How many options? We should support putting on a, a warrant. Is it two, three?
I think it's, I think it's time to start figuring out how much feasibility studies will cost on these things. I think these are the ones, these are the ones we're dealing with.
Here's the numbers that I was given. So I called, um, Jim Burles, who was the O P M to see what he thought it would cost to study three options. Um, all the way to schematic and then, um, price it out. And he thinks that if we use the firm that actually has all this information, it'd be about seven fifty. If we didn't, it'd be a million dollars. So Tim's number is not far off, I don't think, as far as two fifty per or three hundred per, um, option.
I don't see any reason not to just start moving forward with this, bringing this forward is what we want to look at now.
Tim, you also, um, raised, I thought a good question at the joint meeting with the school committee about, you know, is there a role for a survey here? So when, when should it be done?
I think that we have five options in front of us, including the B two option. If we want to see what the town thinks, pick your top three. It's a pretty simple survey. And then we can see what the town would have support of. Now, I know that we have numbers we could put into it.
You know, you've used very, you know, you've used numbers that, um, the, the first crack we took, we had the twelve proposals. That was such a general number. It looked at sort of square footage. Then we narrowed it down to three. We had a real, um, projection cost with the three. And then when we did the one, we had two really good projections. So we don't have these numbers. Um, to, to throw out there. So I don't, if cost is truly the driving force, I don't see how you do that without having the actual cost.
So if we do without numbers, which was going to be the alternative to keep it simpler, what are your preferred options of town? Or what is your least preferred? Maybe we flip it around and say, what's your least preferred option? What are the two that you want to fall off? These cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each to study, three hundred thousand dollars each to study. Which two don't you want to waste money on? And then maybe you flip it around on its head and say, which, which are not something you would like us to think about.
I just don't see how you do that without cost, because cost was so important to people. So if you don't say this one's fifty, forty, thirty.
So, so maybe feasibility, that's the real number in front of us today. How much money do you want to throw away? On these options, what are your bottom three or bottom two that you want to fall off?
When the cost comes in, the bottom one may turn out to be the better option. So lopping it off just because you don't want to spend money on the feasibility seems like a, um, an incorrect course. So I need to, I like, okay, these are all things that we might be able to live with, but we need to know what they will cost.
I'm going to throw a monkey wrench into the works because I'm good at it. I, uh, I asked Jim Peggy to pull, uh, the most recent town census data and then I aligned it. To, um, or he aligned it to the school years and, um. There is, over the next five years at least, there is no demographic pressure. To resolve this. There may be demographic pressure as we get into the twenty forties. If you believe the Donahue Institute, which is the state's demographer, uh, we might be seeing the second echo of the baby boom. In, in that timeframe, but, um. We may have more time to actually study these choices. It's, it's pretty clear in my mind that, uh, there needs to be a short term. Resolution of Neri because we need a roof at a minimum. And we may need some, some additional things, but. There's no. Student population pressure to force a decision. This year versus next.
I don't think anyone said that. So I agree, um, that it's the state of Neri that is driving the urgency and nothing else but that. It's just in bad shape.
Right. And, you know, the state of Neri, you know, I think is really driven not by schools. But, you know, it is driven by our vision of, you know, is nearly going to remain a school? If it doesn't remain a school, then we have to ask ourselves the question, what happens to that building? If it becomes a municipal building, then we have to actually take a look at all of the other municipal buildings. Because at that point, we clearly would have a substantial surplus of, um. Town space in each of those, uh, municipal space. And frankly, we need to dispose of because we, you know, there, there are valuable assets that can help defray the costs of. What we're doing. So, um.
But Neri is in such bad shape, you'd have to spend quite a bit of money even on the town side to make it useful. It may not be what you spend for school, because we thought the same thing with Finn. Um, it would cost less to keep it as a town building than a school. Um, same thing with Neri. I just think the number is multiplied, um, because again, it's in such poor shape.
Well. I'm not sure about that. You know, um, you know, I, I, we, uh, you know, I take a look at, uh, the, the senior center. And I, you know, that building, when we acquired it was no great shape and that building is frankly not great to begin with. Um, we've got the South Union School, which is no one could describe as in good, good condition.
I agree.
Um, and so I, I think part of this has to be. A, a slightly more holistic plan about, you know, what we do with the other buildings with. In, in the school, we got to stop thinking in terms of silos. If, you know, this is a school problem, this is a town problem. And it's a town space problem. And if we had, and it certainly looks like. In aggregate, as a town, we have more space than we need. We may, some of it's in really bad shape and some of it's important, it, it needs updating, but you know, we, we. If we update space and, you know, uh, I'm taking a hard look at Neri right now, just because I like to do things sort of. From a, a third view. We need to figure out how to optimize our space because every piece of space we have ultimately sucks down money. Uh, every school building takes one to two million dollars a year in sort of depreciation, something we never really think about. And, um, you know, the, every other building has, has its depreciation number two. And that depreciation number is in fact turns into real cash. And that is real cash that we can't spend on teachers. It's real cash. We can't spend on firefighters. It's real cash. We can't spend on, uh, on programs and, and roads. So, um, I, I'm going to argue that we need to, to take, we have time to think about this. But yes, it does hinge on what we do in the short term with Neri.
So I don't know if there's any consensus from what we've talked about, but does it make sense that? We should, do we think we support at least three options? That makes sense?
I'm just not even ready to say that tonight. Can we do this on the second, um, when we got more time? But I mean, tonight we could just pick the dates, right? That would work for a special. Um, I'd like to.
Okay.
Spend, because I really didn't know we were going to go in this step. So, um.
That's, that's fine. I just, my goals with this, and I knew this would be a little bit too, uh, free flowing, right? Um, the first stop at it. I think we're, rather than showing up on the eighth, then we, you know, we have five different views. If we at least feel like, is there some consensus on the number of options that we thought we should present?
It should be studied.
Yes, that's right. That should be studied. In other words, you're willing to spend money to find out what the total cost is. And is there any information that we, you feel we should get in advance of that meeting that we don't currently have? And does it make sense to, I mean, we can put together, pull together surveys and. Get feedback pretty quickly. Does it make sense to try to have a serve, a quick survey for the eighth or?
Again, I think it's very difficult for a resident to choose a particular option if they don't know what it's going to cost.
So that was, there's, there's no role for a survey because you, um, I, I, I think there is a role for us. Like the way Tim framed it, okay. The town is think at a, the question would go something like. The town is considering having a special town meeting in February or March. Um, to ask town meeting to fund feasibility studies for, you know, up to three different. School, potential school, different school projects. The goal is to find out how much they, they cost. Roughly, we think this would cost about this much. Do you have a view of, of these four or five different options? Which are the three you would most support? Does it make sense to have a rough idea of that feedback before we decide? Um, what's on the warrant? I think, I think it does.
Andrew, you don't have those numbers. I'm just trying to tell you, you don't have those numbers.
I'm not, that, I'm being, this would be completely upfront about the fact that you don't have the numbers. But I still think people would be able to make a decision about, I'm compl- completely uninterested in studying that, no matter what, how much it costs.
If, I would find value in this, because if the town had enough support from this study or the survey. And an option that I wasn't expecting to be in the top three would pop up, I would definitely think differently about what I see in the top three.
This would be also a gut, I mean, it may be that if, if we have an idea of what options should be considered, we don't be surprised. The town, town meeting. Well, why didn't you even propose this to us? Yes.
Tim Woodland wrote, um. A couple of observations that may help think about this. First, and I think it was clearly brought out in the pre K to eight building committee. Um, feasibility really matters. And so I think to first order, it's really important. Uh, to have feasibility. Early in the, in, in the discussions, because, you know, we can certainly wish for, um. A, you know, ten dollar solution, but if you don't have the land for it, if you don't, you know, have. You know, the environment for it, why, why bother? The second observation I'll make is that instead of trying to guess how many options you want to look at. You might think about it in terms of how much money are we willing to spend? And then you can fit, you know, how many options you want to study and how much depth into that, that budget. Because. You know, the option cost is going to vary and you just, I don't think we, I don't think you have the information. I think what you're struggling with is trying to make a decision without having, as, as Kathy says, you know, the numbers or the. Or, you know, as the pre K eight said, you know, the feasibility, uh, to make a decision. And I think throwing it at the, at the town with a, you know, what's your gut feel about, you know, what would you be willing to look at? Is not going to get you a, a sort of rational answer. So maybe that helps you to, to think about this.
Thanks.
I think you get five different numbers though, when you do that, um, as far as what you're willing to spend.
Okay, shall we move on to talking about potential dates?
It's easier.
Okay, that is easier, but it's still not easy. Um, should it be weeknight or should be a, a weekend?
Weeknight.
I don't think so, uh, because you, you want to get a lot of, um, school age kid. Remember, remember that. We did have a bylaw that said we were supposed to do the annual, uh, no later than last Saturday, March, and that was because they were trying to get. Um, school age parents there in that where there was a window where they were between sports seasons. This would be that window. So I think this one actually should be a Saturday.
This would be like one or two articles, right? We're not, like, we're not going to squeeze in more than just the school topics plus maybe one other thing that might pop up, right?
I think it's.
Once it would be open, there could be, you know.
Somebody can always add something to it. We can't stop that situation, but the intent is to make it the schools.
No, I mean, if it's that, it's shortened a weeknight and in, out and done. My, my thought.
But you're still at, still, kids are still in school, so the parents still have to figure out, um, you know, what to do as far as getting there. And parents are going to be very interested in this vote. So I, I still think Saturday would get more parents.
Bonnie, what, what do you think?
That's not what I think is, um, this will be before the annual town meeting. You're going to be asking for funding.
Yeah, about a month before.
Excuse me?
About a month before.
Is this going to impact the need for two and a half override?
I think.
Because that needs to be discussed as well, because that's going to impact the general budget. I think it is, but I, you have the numbers.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're right. So we, let's say, make up a number, a million dollars, right? Approved on March eleventh. Um, and so it's going to, when are you going to get the money? July first? Are you going to take it out of, um, the free cash that's been certified? So, yeah, it's going to affect the, the budget. Um, sure. Are you going to debt finance it? What are you going to do? Yeah, so you're taking free cash, you're going to have less to start with, you're going to debt finance it. So.
Okay.
So Monday or Saturday?
I was thinking of, of a Monday. I think that on the weekends, there's more, you know, everyone talks about sports, right?
There's no sports. Um, we're talking about it, period. I'm not dug in. I don't have kids. I can do either one. Okay. But there is, that's, there's this one.
There's, it doesn't exist. There's not, I'm just tying from my experience.
Katie?
I mean, I need childcare either way. So the problem that I'm running into is it doesn't matter if it's one or the other. You know, I still have to get somebody to watch my kids while I go to town meeting. And if I want my wife to show up, I now need to pay a babysitter. So are you going to be able to do childcare one way or the other better? Are we going to do childcare better on a Saturday that we can have parents show up and then we can do something with rec and have, you know, better participation from that crowd? If we're going to commit to that, maybe I would lean on a Saturday. But if you're going to ask me as a working parent, what day would be better for me, I'd probably rather squeeze it in on a weeknight. And have that Saturday not obligated with this, uh, town meeting piece to make it work. But if you're going to offer me childcare down to a one year old, which is what I have.
What do you mean offer you childcare?
Like at the meeting, have childcare available that my wife could participate without needing to watch two kids under three by herself. So she can be there. That's what we're having a problem with right now. How do we get participation of that crowd into this meeting without paying for? Some ungodly number per hour of childcare.
All right. But so you agree, we, we agree, we should, we'd prefer to have it on a Monday rather than Saturday.
I think I prefer Monday over Saturday.
All right. And I know my, this, this is just a personal preference based on my own work schedule that, um.
Well, wait, Al, you've got grandkids Monday or Saturday?
I think I'm indifferent. I, 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 there, there's really, I, I, I would probably go with Monday.
Yeah. I mean, we had a successful.
But, but I think. Anybody who thinks this is going to be short.
I agree.
Is, uh.
Yep. And that, that's also adds an element to it, right? Of where if you have it on a week, of, of a weeknight. This is a unusual discussion where you can have different articles that all depend on each other, right? It's not as simple as.
Oh, I, I think this is messy. I, I, you, you know, uh, this is messy. It, it's. I, I, I would go with the Monday, but, um. I, I don't think this is going to be short and I, I still don't quite know how you. You make that work. The, the mechanics of it, I think are.
But Al, we heard loud and clear, um, as a person in this audience tonight. Um, that people really were appalled that they only had, in the end, one project to vote on, even though. They didn't understand the process, but that's okay. So we know we've got to bring forth more than one project. I mean, I think that's clear. Um, I mean, I don't care about Monday or Saturday either, but I'm telling you, Andrew, there is at least a small window, maybe. For kids that play club sports or it's not, but for town sports, there is a small window. But they're, they're not doing anything.
Jim, this is a, sorry, this is a question for you. Why don't we have childcare at the town meetings?
You volunteering? Who's going to be responsible? Who's going to, um, take care of that? There was an initial, um. Proposal by the school committee, uh, the schools to have childcare at the special time.
Proposal by the school committee, uh, the schools to have childcare at the special time, maybe held at Algonquin. But it was capped, I think, at twenty people and they preregister. And when I heard that, I suggested that was a disaster because you can't turn people away that show up at the last minute kind of a deal. There are only a couple of towns that do that. One town, I think Lincoln does it with. Staff of, uh, I forgot the term they use now for the after-school program, not rap, but the. Yeah, something like that. So you have to have a professional group of people. You can't just bring a bunch of high school kids in, uh, that with well-meaning kids to do it. It's a complicated issue, medical issues, you have to have care for kids that have special needs.
It's a liability issue too.
Hundred percent. It's a big to-do. And even at this last town meeting, we had kids wandering through the building. And I had a situation when I walked into the cafeteria and it was really hot. And I went over to see if I could open the doors, uh, to get across breeze in it. And I asked one of the, uh, voters sitting there, what do you think? And she said, these aren't my kids. I have no idea who these kids are near the door. And I was afraid to open the door, the kid wandered the parking lot. So I, I, I'm being a wise guy about you volunteering, but. I just think it's a very complex issue, uh, and, um. Significant liability issues. And if we did this at Trotty, we could find a way to make it work someplace. But, um, it's a, it's a big issue. I would recommend against it. Very few towns do it. Lincoln's the only one I know, and that was on a weeknight kind of a deal. If I could throw my oar in the water, weeknight versus a Saturday, I'd go with the Saturday, hundred percent. Much simpler, less impact on the schools. If it runs long and you have to go to the second night, it becomes extraordinarily costly and you disrupt the schools for two full days. This is such a hot topic. We have to be conservative and plan on having the same kind of a crowd we had before. So now you're talking about disrupting the gymnasium. For two days, you know, during a school, it, it's very, uh, uh, complex and very much. If it runs to two nights during a, during a weekday. Much more expensive than having it on a Saturday. Um, that's my two cents worth.
Remember, kids can't stay till eleven o'clock, and they got to go home, go to school, so you're not going to keep them there till eleven anyway, even if they've got daycare. Or if we have babysitting, they're not going to stay.
It's clear, when you look at the, uh, the ebb and flow of people that have to leave early. There's a couple of folks that stay with the kids late at night. I wouldn't want to be their teacher the following morning. But most of them clear out as quick as they can. I think. I have a couple of thoughts. We, we talk about school night at eleven o'clock with kids at night. Something, uh, to always keep in mind, that a lot of older people don't like to drive at night. And they're not going to stay, either not going to come to a weeknight meeting or they're not going to stay late. They just don't like to drive at night, and I understand that. So just throwing that out there. I'll do whatever you want me to do.
Jim, let me ask you a silly question. How much does it cost to hold an election?
You mean a town meeting?
No, an election.
I don't know off the top of my head, I can get your number.
Ballpark.
I'm going to say somewhere around six, seven thousand dollars. Your biggest expense is the labor for the workers. Then you have a couple of police offices, that's the better part of a thousand or twelve hundred bucks. You have to, the cost to program the machines and print the ballots, um, it's a few thousand dollars. Under ten grand, for sure.
So let, let me offer.
Mailing, is that including mailing or no?
No, that's strictly in, you know, physical stuff.
Maybe instead of a town meeting. We put. Three or five options on the table. Run an extensive education campaign and say. This is the day we vote. And the top three will be studied. That.
I think you can. I think that if something like this has to be done through a town meeting, right? An appropriation?
Appropriation has to be a town meeting.
Well, we, we could do the, the appropriation could be done at the annual. The selection could be done. By an election.
Let me, I, I don't have a dog in the fight one way or the other. A very limited number of people. Participate in local elections. Um, that's a story for another day. One option, if you wanted to go all in on that, would be for us to mail a ballot to every registered voter. Roughly seventy-five hundred people. But still, if you count them and all, you know, the other costs we talked about. With the mailing and the rest of it. Assuming you want to pay postage post-way, that would be somewhere around the order of twelve, fourteen thousand dollars, somewhere in that range. In addition to the counting of the election. So you're talking rough numbers, say, somewhere between like fifteen and twenty grand. Your return on that. What's the word I'm looking for here? There's a fancy marketing term for that, the number of people that respond.
Response rate.
There you go. I have enough. Not enough caffeine today. You're looking at fifteen percent, if that. So it's, it's a slim number. Feedback we got from people who've attended. Well, I don't get far field. We can do whatever you want. We could mail ballots out to everybody, we could send a, uh. For very inexpensive notice to every household, uh, what's called an every-door direct, which is kind of a funky postcard, like a five-by-nine postcard. For about a dollar a piece, goes to every household, that's like thirty, under four thousand dollars to get to everybody's household. Color both ways, all that kind of good stuff. We could have QR codes on that kind of a deal, so we could certainly, and banners around town. There's lots of ways to get the message out to people, if, if you want us to, to work on that, we can do that for sure.
Special election or the annual town election?
Thank you, pardon.
That would precede the appropriation?
Yeah, so sometime in. Let's say it's March 1st, just for the sake of argument. There would be a special election. Again, this, you know, I'm the patron saint of bad ideas.
Oh, you're not, go ahead.
Yeah. There'd be a special election, you know, there'd be five things, the top three would be studied and, or the top two would be studied, and the money would be appropriated at the annual. That kind of. You know. It's an al-, it's an alternative.
All right. Okay, I'm getting some information about, okay, at least for. Kids' basketball. Her. Playoff start March 4th, all right, so that if you're looking, I, I'm just. Sorry, I'm, I'm not paying attention to your idea, honestly, I'm just thinking about, my goal is, can we identify one or two light pencil-in dates for, uh. Not to fix them in stone, but for, uh, for this special time. That's the most concrete thing that we could.
If we go to the meeting on the eighth, with this kind of chaos, we're not going to anything, it's going to be four times the people here, so I agree, we got to do, accomplish something either tonight or on the second to try to. Or at least our focus down.
Can I throw a non-traditional thought up to you? We talk about weeknights or Saturday. I forget which one of the large towns just held a special time meeting on a Sunday. Now, I know that would offend some people. Uh, who. Uh, of their Christian faith that don't want to, uh, work on a Sunday, but towns have done that.
Medford did it, and they did it in the afternoon to keep away from the, um.
Yes.
First time.
And I don't know that the basketball is on a Sunday as, I know it's a Saturday, but I don't know.
The reason I just brought this up is because if, if. Okay, your, your recommendation, which I take seriously, is that we do this on the weekend rather than a weekday.
Yes.
Okay, so then that brings up. When is the time when sports? Ends, right? When is this window between? Which would seem to be. I, I'm suggesting it's after. March. Fourth. It's like the weekend of March 7th, March, Saturday, March 7th, Saturday, March 7th. Fourteenth are potential dates.
That puts a month in between special and annual.
I know, you, you can't get close to, to, too close to annual town meeting, but then, I, I think going any past Saturday, March 14th is, doesn't make sense. So do those dates look, sound like generally? That we should consider them?
If we're going to consider Saturday, I think, you know, the seventh would be the latest, I would think makes sense. Otherwise, we're within one, two, three. Five weeks away from an annual town meeting. In which case, save the cost of this and put it on an annual town meeting. The whole point of this is to get ahead of annual town meeting, have less on the agenda. And to fund this earlier, because otherwise we're funding a roof project, or would theoretically be funding a roof project at annual town meeting.
All right. Sunday, March 7th as a, now, Jim, I know you had some blackout dates.
Saturday.
Saturday, Saturday. March 7th. Okay, that's a yes, good? Okay, and that's not, we're not agreeing to that yet, it's just kind of, that's a date we can see.
Pencil it in.
Pencil it in. Pencil it in.
Okay, so are we totally dropping the idea of any kind of mail?
This is just too much for me to get my head around. I've never thought about. There's no precedent for this that I can think of, it's just too much for me to process right now.
I, I would just say, it might be messy. A, as much as I like the idea, because it's way more approachable to more people in the community, it might be messy that you still have to fund this. So what happens if the vote says no later? Are you doing it twice? We're going to rehash this a second time? Like, I'm willing to think about it some more. But that's one of my immediate reactions is like, are we doing this twice in some kind of way?
Okay. All right. Request for, should we move on to the next item on the agenda?
Take a, uh, five-minute break?
Okay, um. Next. Item on the agenda is a quest, request for a successor agreement for our finance director. Um. Brian Valentine's contract is coming up. And I think what we're looking to do here is to, as we have usually done for these, delegate someone to meet with Brian and come back with a proposal for a new contract terms. Right? And I know Kathy, you had, you worked with, uh, Brian on the last contract, right?
Yeah, I cannot believe it's been three years. You're right, right? It's really time, okay.
And is there anyone who you would like to work with Kathy? I know sometimes we've had two people.
This is pretty easy, to be perfectly frank, I think, so I just soon do it, bring it, bring it forth to everybody. Everybody look at it and go from there. I don't think you need to on this one. But if somebody wants to do it with me, that's fine. I'm not dug in.
Okay. Does anyone want to work with Kathy on this, or?
I think she'll be good by herself.
All right, so I, I move that we appoint Kathy to work with, uh, Brian to negotiate terms of a new contract to be brought back to the board, uh, in executive session.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.
I'm agreeing.
All right, so the last item on the agenda, this is something completely different subject matter than we, the other things that we have discussed. And this is about, um, discussion of naming spaces within the public safety building. The reason why I brought this up is at a select board office hours, probably six months ago, seven months ago. Um, Katie Berry, who's here, had brought to Kathy and our attention that back in two thousand nineteen, I think, the Public Safety Building Committee had a subcommittee for naming either the building or, um, the three different parts of the building, the fire training tower, the dispatch center, and the training room. And this committee, it collected nominations of people. And then I think voted as for each of these three places to um. Send a couple of different nominations for naming to the select board, which ultimately would decide this in early two thousand twenty, and then I think what happened was COVID happened, and then just everyone lost sight of it. And no, nothing further has happened, right? So, um, there was a lot of work that went into this process before. People nominated people, and then your, Katie, your father was, um, um, uh, his name was, um, a, um, advanced nominated. And this just died. So the suggestion here is, um, I think we should finish the work that was two-thirds done. Um, wha- what I would suggest is we don't reopen nominations. They've already been submitted. There's already a process that followed there. It turned out to be probably a good thing that there wasn't a formal naming ceremony for the, the dispatch center, since we're going to be disbanding the dispatch center. Another thing that the, the minutes of these meetings suggest that I think makes sense is to name two places, and one should be for a retired police officer, and one should be for a retired firefighter. I'm not suggesting we make any decisions tonight. Um, but maybe we could invite the, certainly I recognize some of the names of the people that are on these committees. Uh, participated to invite them to come back. Is there any information we're just forgetting that's not in these minutes about how far this went? And also to reach out to people who submitted nominations before, and probably were left guessing what happened. That was probably have forgotten about it. It was five years ago, six years ago. And I'll just let them know where this stands, and maybe at a future meeting, we would, um, review the information and take a vote.
And to hold just to name, um, two or three.
What, well, what I would suggest is that the training room and the fire training tower. What do you think of this?
Uh, your process sounds pretty good, but is this a great opportunity to include the town in a survey? To put this down into like a top three or so, or however we see kind of the process playing out, and then asking this one to be something that the town raises on?
Um, no, that's.
Part, part of it has to do with, um, people who were historically very important in the public safety. And I, and I'm comfortable with two, with the tower and the, um, training room, um, having names on them. And I, I, I think that's Peter Faniff and, um, Chief Weber.
A lot of people who live here now, Tim, won't even know who these people are, um, it's.
I, I mean, I think it's kind of a little bit sad that, you know, because this process just died in, in two thousand twenty, and five years have passed, probably some of the people that made these nominations are going to be find difficult to find, or some, some, a lot of work was done into this. It can make sense to just complete it. And, and, you know, there, there is a naming policy that was adopted in two thousand seventeen. I think we're kind of generally following this policy. The main point of the policy is that um, you know, the select board, there, there should be a fair process, right? Where, um, if someone's, once, someone wants someone's name to be considered, that there's an open process to consider that, so. Al, what, what do you think? Any thoughts on this?
Uh. No, I don't have any thoughts.
Okay. So does that, does this? Sound good?
And most of them are still here, Andrew. I just went through them, uh, as far as who's nominated them. And the rest of my B two, I just don't know who they are, but.
Uh, so Katie?
Yeah, uh, Katie Berry, twenty-three Richards Road. Um, I just want to thank you for putting this on the agenda. Um, it was my first and only office hours, though I promote it quite often, and it, look what happened. So people should go if you have a topic that you want to speak about. Uh, but this does mean a lot, and I think that you talk about a lot of heavy things. You have very hard decisions to make, and I don't sit there for one of that, that's one of the reasons. But, um, I think that this process that we went through five years ago, um, was a beautiful thing. It's, it's about, um, people's legacy and, and, uh, it's to honor them. Um, I don't know Mr. McAuliffe, but I see his face every time I walk in here. I put his name on all your agendas, and he looks like a great guy, and, and his legacy lives on. So I hope that this process for you, um, is a good one, and it makes your heart a little lighter, because, um, it means a lot to a lot of people, and, um, I think it'd be something that could be positive. I know it's another hard decision, because there's a lot of great people out there, um, my dad being one of them, so just for transparency, but, um, thank you.
Your dad was one of them, for sure.
Is there any other public comment, or, you know, Bonnie, I see you there, because you, you have any suggestions, comment? Okay.
But I think we should do this.
Okay.
Get it done.
All right, and I agree with you. This is a nice thing to do after talking about difficult policy, uh, issues. Right, um, well, the last item on the agenda is public comment. Is there any other public comment? Okay, all right. Hello? You have to un, um, are you, you're still muted. Mrs. Weber.
Is that your mom, Katie?
My stepmom, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Well, maybe we're not able to get contact with her. We'll just take it up at the next meeting. Okay, um, any other comment? Yeah, or any other topic, yeah, the public comment, sure.
Before I left the board, um, in two thousand eighteen, twice I had made the suggestion, and it was voted on, that the poll in front of this town hall be a monument to everyone that has served this community, not by name, but in general. And it was voted on twice. So maybe the tricentennial committee can dedicate the town hall poll to the community members that have made this community what it is.
Thank you.
It's in the minutes.
Okay. Right, um, I, I move that we adjourn?